Twenty twenty five, if everyone could join me for the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we are on to the minutes for October first.
Immediate business. Yeah, so this music allows children to be unique and make.
Okay, so I, can you go back and fill in the word?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I will make a motion to approve the October first minutes. Uh, you have to caveat that Trish will go in and add whatever word she intended to add.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, October fifth. I will make a motion to approve the October fifteenth minutes. Okay, any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving the October fifteenth minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, Steve, I wasn't here either, so I'll just have to wait up to do it again later then.
You guys can still, you can still vote if you weren't here, if you're comfortable, you don't have to. It's up to you guys. You know what you can vote. What would you, what would you like?
I feel okay doing it, I just wanted that I.
Okay. That's fine. Um, so you'll say aye.
Aye.
Okay, three, zero, one. Alrighty, we are then moving on to public comments.
Greg Whitmore, North Road. So I was wondering if it's possible um to have an area of the school where for, let's say thirty, forty-five minutes after school each day, um if students who, their parents can't get there in time to pick them up, or uh, you know, traditionally it's a difficult time, is there a place they can sit and wait for parents? So, you know, in my mind envision like, could they sit, you know, in the gym on the bleachers, um, have a teacher that we give a small stipend to if they're willing to do it, they just sit there and watch them, you know, just give parents that extra buffer time? And uh, it doesn't have to be a lot of times, like I know myself personally, sometimes I have an extremely difficult time getting there. Quick, it seems like over the years pickup time has kind of moved back and back and back to the point where I'm barely showing up. And I know other parents are, have trouble getting there in time too, so. Uh, uh, like in the past, there's been times where my daughter could like wait at the office, but it's a tiny little space, only a couple of kids can fit in there. And I think if parents knew that this was an option, would more people be, you know, willing to take advantage of that? You know, it's, it's just a small, simple thing, or you know, if it wasn't in the gym on the bleachers, could it just be in like a first floor classroom? The parents could come in and say, hey, I'm here for my kid, if they have to contact the school and say, you know, I'm, I'm gonna be late, can they, can they wait for me type thing? So, just another option to make things easier for parents, um. What else? Uh, kind of along the same lines, a very small, simple thing, I suggested this in the past. I know that Gaga Ball is very popular among the kids at recess. And I get the daily reports about the, you know, who played what, and it sounds like the desire to play um, is uh, limited by the fact that there's only one Gaga Ball pit, so could we put in another one? Just so that more kids have the opportunity to get out there and play it during recess. And uh, one more thing, I'm always surprised that DCS spends money on curriculum. So I, myself, I'm a teacher, I teach six different classes, and I designed the curriculum for all of them. We don't pay any money for my curriculum, and I, I mean, I can't imagine purchasing curriculum. I would think that curriculum should play to the teachers' strengths while meeting state standards, okay? And I feel that if we have a properly trained and certified teacher, we should trust them and want them to create their own curriculum, and not have to spend money purchasing some canned material that's not necessarily streamlined for the needs of our students at DCS. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Other public comments? Okay. Um, more discussion regarding public comments. Anything we want to quickly resolve, or anything you want to add to a future agenda?
I just have a question, what is Gaga Ball?
Oh.
It's a really fun game.
I don't know.
It's a really fun game.
Something you play inside of a dome like a.
It's a ball, you chuck it.
It's fun.
It was donated to, it was donated to the school.
But I, I think it was an eighth grade class.
Eighth grade class.
Built in and lived together.
So that's a possibility that another magnet might want to do a second one, is that, or was that just the eighth grade class recently?
Um, it was essentially after a kid's graduated, the parents donate it.
On the future agenda about the room for parents, I see all kinds of issues from my teacher hat.
Yeah.
Days with that.
I also want to try the, I mean, we don't, I don't think the board sets dismissal time. Um, but I think that's more of a question for you guys. But.
I wrote them down so we can talk about.
Yeah, usually yes.
Uh, admin on Fridays, so we can talk about some of the stuff.
Cool, alright, sounds good. Agenda review, we are gonna change the agenda around quite a bit, just because it's a very long agenda and I anticipate a very long meeting. Um, so for immediate business, we're gonna have the PA presentation, then we're going to have uh, stage road as item B. Then we're going to have facilities report as letter C. And then the budget presentation will be D, um, board goals E, superintendent goals F, um, delegate review G. We may move some of those depending on what time we're done.
Yeah.
Um, with the budget. And then we may move board reports or, or policies, but we'll see how the evening goes. Uh, we do need a non-public session, so.
Okay.
Don't get too excited when we're close to wrapping. Um, review of correspondence, I think there was only one email. It was from Kevin Burville regarding a comment.
It was about curriculum and everything.
Curriculum, the art and music programs. It was a Facebook comment that he forwarded to us.
I don't think the music program was anymore, it was just art.
There was.
They mentioned drumming.
Oh, drumming, oh, drumming, that's great. Um, I, I am planning on just writing in response, it would be for me, but just from all the things I know that the school does, being on the curriculum review committee, and all the different testing that we do, because we do way more than just SASS testing.
Yeah.
So I'm planning on getting back to him, and I did see him last night and told him I would be responding, but I just didn't have a chance.
Sure.
Um, the, what was the one thing that?
Oh, I had something about, like the art program because it said that it's just free choice.
Yes.
And that's, unless it has changed since I have retired, and I don't believe it has. Um, they are taught different mediums, they are taught about different authors, you know, artists, sorry. Um, they are taught techniques, yes, they have a choice if they want to do that technique or not, or if they want to pick one that they like, but I do know that the art teachers keep track of what medium the students are using. And there does come a point in the year where you really need to not use marker, you need to try something. So it just wanted it out there that it's not just free choice. There is, there is a lot of teaching going on.
And our curriculums are available if people want to review of the curriculum.
I agree with everything Nancy said, I was wondering though if it would be worthwhile to have the art teachers come into a presentation like the music teachers did?
Yeah, their curriculum was reviewed, I don't.
Just last year.
I just, I just remember them coming recently, but.
But that was sort of over the, well, yeah, they should have.
I mean, we could certainly.
I mean, it was kind of more geared toward the curriculum and not so much how they run the classroom, that's the only thing, but yeah, we don't have to, I just thought.
No, 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 we could use your hands.
I thought it was very helpful to hear the music programming, I thought it might be good to hear all the pieces.
Yeah, if they're interested.
That's been a lot of questions.
Yeah. Or if anyone wants to come and present to us, we're always happy to have presentations. Okay, um, nothing for consent agenda, okay? So we are on to immediate business, we have the PA presentation. If you would love, if you would like to come and join us. If you would love to. I mean, I don't know, you don't have to know that strongly, no. I'm gonna get close, sorry. Do you want to do a brief intro?
Sure, so um, Mr. Hamilton is the headmaster over at Pembroke Academy, and where we've had uh, presentations from Concord High and Co-Brown before, uh, but we haven't necessarily had PA, felt it was a good opportunity, um, with Mr. Hamilton being new, for him to come in and give a little blurb about Pembroke Academy. Uh, we'll likely have some students come at some point as well, as well as representatives from Concord and Co-Brown as well. So we'll continue with that path at the same time, but adding in Pembroke Academy as that choice and making sure that they're representative as well. Support group.
Thank you for joining, you're up.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity, um, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so I'll, I'll try to keep it brief. I'll move over here to the camera, so I'm not talking to everybody's back. Um, Sue, uh, this presentation was shared at the AREA meeting a couple of weeks ago, uh, so that's why your date is October twenty-second. And uh, I reached out to Jess about the opportunity to speak with you tonight, mainly because, you know, several components of the presentation came as an inspiration from talking with Deerfield students when they visited in mid-October. So the title of this, The Land of an Opportunity, uh, came from a panel discussion we had with your students where uh, we asked for students and staff members who were present that day to introduce themselves and talk about the hats, the roles that they play as a teacher or student, you know, what clubs, activities, programs like that, are you involved with? And about two-thirds of the way through the presentation, one of our students stood up and introduced himself and described Pembroke Academy as the land of opportunity. And he went on to talk about the classes that he was involved with, the clubs that he was involved with, um, and just that, you know, he and his classmates really had the opportunity to kind of chart, you know, their pathway through, through high school. So it seemed like a fitting way to describe what Pembroke Academy has to offer. So uh, we have three goals at Pembroke Academy, um, and um, I think, you know, coming into PA being relatively new, um, both the school goals and the vision of the graduate are very visible, it's very well-known. Um, and you know, when we think about, you know, what a Pembroke Academy graduate should look like, we think about somebody who works hard, who is respectful, and is a smart one. And one thing I've shared with people, and I think it's uh, it's challenging, you know, for students, for adults to transition, you know, maybe from a, you know, small school like Deerfield, I'm, I'm from Pittsfield, I spent twenty years there as a, as a teacher and administrator, to, to moving to a bigger school, you know, something that's maybe two, three, two to three times the size of where you're coming from. Um, but what I would say about my first four months in Pembroke is that everybody has been warm, welcoming, supportive, helpful. Um, and I see that not just to me, because I'm the new headmaster, but I see that in the way that we treat uh, you students, incoming ninth graders, uh, the way that we've treated uh, you staff members, there seems to be a really um, uh, strong camaraderie among art teachers and among our students. You know, some of the feedback that our upperclassmen give to incoming freshmen is, well, it might be intimidating, rest assured, anybody is willing to help and lend, uh, helping hand to steer you in the right direction, and everything I've seen in the hallways and classes and lunch is, is, that's very true. Um, so I mentioned before, like the goals at PA are very visible, but another piece that's really stood out to me is um, these sort of knowledge skills and dispositions. You know, uh, we refer to them as twenty-first century learning skills or soft skills. Um, but NIASC, uh, the regional agency that um, accredits Pembroke Academy and most other in England schools, um, requires schools to have a vision of the graduate. And uh, having served as a visiting team member to several other uh, schools across the England, this is typically an area that schools fall a little short, you know, maybe it's not visible, maybe it's not known, it might not be something that, you know, students give feedback on with, with consistency. Uh, but what I've noticed at Pembroke Academy is that it really does hit on all three of those things. It's visible, people know um, what these uh, four beliefs are, and students get feedback at proxy reports and um, at the end of semester from their teachers in each one of their courses. Uh, so this is really kind of woven in the fabric of, of who we are. Uh, and this is generally, these are the types of skills that aren't necessarily measured within your curriculum. Um, these are some of the skills that, that go beyond that, and that are necessary for success beyond high school. And I think PA does a great job of articulating those, giving students feedback in these areas. So uh, I wanted to talk a little bit about the academic programs that are available to uh, students at Pembroke Academy. And one of the best ways to do that is to just kind of highlight the free diploma options that are available to students. Um, and so there's the standard Pembroke Academy diploma, uh, with one hundred and twenty credits and designated curriculum areas by the state of New Hampshire. Uh, but there are two additional ways for students to graduate with distinction. Uh, one is to earn ten credits in world language, so we offer Spanish and French um, at Pembroke Academy. And uh, the other piece of that honors with distinction diploma is that they have a three-point-four um, or higher GPA. The other diploma option is honors distinction, uh, which requires students to have a three-point-six or higher GPA, but they also have to earn forty credits in honors level AP or dual enrollment eligible courses. And these next couple of slides articulate what types of honors courses, what types of AP courses that we offer. And then I'll take a moment just to talk about, you know, other more career-oriented programs um, that are available to students as well. So uh, there are four high honors options available to students at Pembroke Academy. Um, when we say um, college credit bearing or dual enrollment, it means um, students can enroll in a class in high school through the um, Southern New Hampshire Dual Enrollment Program, or the Running Start Equipment, Running Start Program available through the community colleges in New Hampshire. So they're taking a high school class uh, with a teacher that has a master's degree in the um, in the, in the designated area. And they're earning the high school credit and college credit for taking those, those select courses. So those credits are available through Southern New Hampshire and um, the community colleges in New Hampshire. And then for courses that we don't necessarily offer within our curriculum, students have opportunities to take uh, classes through Estart, which is also connected to the community colleges in New Hampshire, where there is just a wide variety of, of courses for them to select. And then there are advanced placement courses, um, that have been vetted uh, by uh, college professors, um, nationally. And if students take these courses and earn a three or better on the AP exam, that's another way for them to earn college credit. One thing that really stood out in looking at our scores from the twenty-four, twenty-five school year is that um, we had about fifty-six test takers of AP exams last year, and ninety-five percent of those test takers earned a three or better on their AP assessment. And that's a major leap in comparison to the previous uh, two years at Pembroke Academy, uh, where those percentages were closer to about fifty-two, fifty-six percent. Um, so there's some really, you know, high achieving students and some impressive work by their teachers as well. To give you a sense of which classes are available to students in that dual enrollment capacity, um, in English, we offer creative writing, film studies, and college composition. And in science, we offer Botany, University of Life, Ecology, and Human Biology, uh, most of which Mr. Whitmore teaches at Pembroke Academy. Um, those, uh, there are some of these classes that are also offered at the AP level, I will highlight those on the next slide. So um, our AP options extend beyond English and science and also include uh, social studies classes as well. Um, the crossover here between dual enrollment and AP is our advanced placement environmental science class and our advanced placement US history class, as well as advanced placement biology. So that gives you a sense of like, what are those high honors options? Um, but if a high honors option or route is not necessarily the pathway that um, is for your student, then there are other opportunities that are available as well. Um, we have a partnership with Concord Regional Technical Center, um, at Concord High, uh, which is generally available to students at the start of their junior year, there are some three-year programs that are available to students at the beginning of their sophomore year, those are a little bit more selective than those that start their, their junior year. Um, and this is just a, a flavor of what is available there, I think there are up to fifteen or sixteen different programs that CRTC offers now. Um, but they range from automotive technology to construction, to fire science, to health science and technology. Uh, we have about, we have a student population of about seven fifteen, seven twenty-five at Pembroke Academy, and we have about a hundred and fifty of our students who, um, right now are active at the CRTC center. Um, another pathway to um, to highlight here is the opportunity for extended learning opportunities. So these um, these can take on a variety of forms, but generally speaking, these are experiences that are outside of our traditional program and studies, and give students an opportunity to design activities that might be their interest that we don't offer at Pembroke Academy. So um, a couple of things to highlight is, one, I think one thing's really neat about Pembroke Academy is that we offer a summer reading program every year, um, where we have about forty teachers this past summer who select a book of choice. I think oftentimes we'll, we'll talk with students about what their interest in reading, you know, what potential books, you know, they can offer a book study on. And uh, once teachers select that book, um, students will, will choose which of those teachers and which of those books, um, they're gonna read over the summer. Um, so we had about four hundred students who participate in the program this summer and earn credit, um, for participating in the summer reading program. So once they read the book over the summer, um, they engage in the first two weeks, um, in an assessment of, of that reading, uh, when they return to PA in September. Another uh, unique opportunity that's available is an ELO, particularly for eighth graders transitioning to ninth grade, um, is the Pushing Your Limits program, so it's a two-week program, uh, that runs for four days a week, where students come in, they get to meet teachers, they get to connect with um, students from neighboring towns that are coming to PA. Uh, they're familiar with this, they get familiarized with the school, the programs, uh, they participate in the summer reading program, uh, they work on networking and certain team-building games, uh, they can also, you know, work on study skills and just, you know, best habits uh, to prepare themselves for the start of their, their freshman year. So um, ninety-five percent of our students this past year participated, which is around a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty kiddos, um, who are part of that program, um, earn credit, you know, not the criteria for earning credit for that class. So those are two things that stand out. Um, there's some neat job shadow and internship opportunities that I'll highlight here in just a moment. Uh, we have several students who are engaged in independent studies, uh, where they're designing and partnering with a teacher, um, on a particular topic of interest. And then of course, there are VLOCs opportunities for students as well. The ELO that I wanted to spotlight, just to give you a sense of what types of like job shadows and internships, I think, you know, ELOs, you know, truly are those that are, um, with a community partner. Um, it's, it's not to diminish that partnership with the teacher, but ELOs were designed where students could um, get out, engage in a job shadow and an internship for their, their understanding of a particular topic and um, make a connection with someone in the community who could act as a mentor, um, to them. So one of those unique opportunities that a student, um, designed with the school council at Pembroke Academy is a job shadow at DRC Automotive Repair, it's, you know, just right across the street from us at PA. Um, so he's there, uh, three days a week, three hours a day, um, having a hands-on learning experience with an auto mechanic. Um, at the end of his ELO, um, which is at the end of the semester, he's gonna write a reflection, he's gonna give an evaluation from his auto mechanic, give him, give him five credits towards, towards graduation. So, you know, a really neat, about-the-box, um, experience that, um, this particular student has designed with his school counselor and my community partner at DRC. Outside of academic programs, um, there are a wide variety of school clubs and organizations that are available to students at Pembroke Academy. We're currently offering twenty-eight school clubs, um, and opportunities for kids, and I'll highlight a couple, so our Future Business Leaders of America, uh, the Equity Club is transferred to the DECA program, which is focused on business and marketing. They are putting on their first annual holiday craft fair, um, next Saturday over at Pembroke Academy. Our, um, Drama Club, which has been a longstanding program at PA, is putting on their fall show in early December. Um, our Key Club, um, is engaged in a lot of, uh, community activities, so they're hosting a Thanksgiving dinner for senior citizens of the weekend prior to Thanksgiving coming up. So there's just a variety of really cool options happening there. And we also offer a number of different higher societies, so we just, uh, we just started a Roca Ball Honor Society, which is within the scope of social studies this past year, from Spanish, the Triumph Music, uh, and the National Honor Society itself, I believe have been longstanding, um, organizations at, at Luke Academy, uh, but the Roca Ball is one that we just instituted this past year.
I just have to ask, what's the Chain Reaction Club?
Chain Reaction is just a way to highlight, you know, good deeds and positivity, um, send good vibes to people. Uh, so there is a, we're dedicated in the first floor of the building, where people can make kind of these positive notes, you know, just to, you know, kind of make someone's. Uh, the group I wanted to highlight, um, like we did with the academic programs, and I wanted to put a highlight, a spotlight on Student Senate, so they are probably one of our more active clubs at Pembroke Academy. We had, uh, our homecoming in, uh, early October, they designed a flag football game, uh, which sort of kicked off our homecoming festivities that weekend. Um, it's an opportunity for, uh, our girls to play, our boys to coach, and for parents to come out and, you know, just support our kids in grades nine through twelve. We have a Mr. PA contest, um, that's getting ready here in early November. Uh, they put on the Winter Carnival in February. Um, I described it as better than Christmas, not from my own personal experience, but um, one of our students who, during the panel discussion with, uh, Deerfield students a couple of weeks ago, described it that way, um, in the sense that she looks forward to it, uh, that much. And I think that is also, you know, something that, uh, a variety of students at, at PA will come here and hear. And then Class Day has recently come back, uh, and is sponsored by the Student Senate, so it's an end-of-year celebration and cookout, um, in June. We have thirty-five athletic teams at Pembroke Academy, reigning freshman teams, university varsity teams, and varsity teams, so I've highlighted there, um, some of the opportunities that are available. Um, we just wrapped up field hockey, soccer, cross-country, and football this past fall. Uh, we're preparing for, um, girls and boys basketball season, this is a photo of our, uh, state champion basketball team from two thousand and, spring, two thousand and twenty-five. Um, one of the last things I would share with you is that, uh, Pembroke Academy just went through its, uh, annual ten-year, um, decennial accreditation cycle. Part of this process, uh, started with preparing for a collaborative conference, uh, which occurred in two thousand and twenty-two. So Pembroke Academy engaged in that self-reflection where they evaluate their programs, their curriculum, um, identify, you know, strengths, areas for improvement. And there were three things that came out of that, three priority areas. Uh, one was focusing on school culture and climate, the second was on community involvement, and third is on school curriculum. And what came of that is that there is a parent program, a parent organization called PACT, um, that, um, to some extent is acting like a PTO at the middle of high school, where they have, uh, started to engage themselves um, in fundraising, in, uh, raising awareness about programs at PA, and trying to give back to the school community, to recognize teachers during Staff Appreciation Week. So this is kind of their year two, where I think they're still trying to kind of find their way and identify their priorities, but very rare for high school to have any organization like that. Uh, the other thing that I'd highlight for you is around school curriculum. So when, uh, Pembroke Academy engaged in their, um, ten-year cycle of reflection, uh, one area that was highlighted was, um, the need to articulate their school curriculum um, in order to meet the foundational elements of NIASC. And over a three-year period of time, uh, they went from having a few courses that met the, the identified criteria for having an established curriculum to meeting that, um, that foundation. So there is an identified scope and sequence for all courses that are offered at Pembroke Academy. I think that's, you know, a huge shout-out to the staff and the school administration at PA for, uh, being able to make such headway over a three-year period of time. Um, last thing I would share with you tonight is just, you know, some of our school profile information, so when we send out a transcript to colleges and universities, this is the type of thing that, um, school councils would see. You know, latest data says that seventy percent of our students, seventy-one percent of our students attend a two, four-year, two or four-year school or a trade school. About three-point-four percent of our students went into the military, and about twenty-six percent of our students went into directly to the workforce. Um, another area, uh, that. Another area that's highlighted is what our student achievement results look like. So in two thousand and twenty-four, last fall, there was significant growth on our P S A T scores. So their mean score, which is their total score in reading, writing, and mathematics, that mean score went up by fifty points from a nine ninety-seven to a ten forty-seven, which again, that's a huge gain, not typically one that you could see like that from one year to the next. And we also say, saw a similar correlation, our S A T scores, those increased by forty-five points from an average score of nine forty-seven to nine ninety-one between the two thousand and twenty-four and the two thousand and twenty-five assessment years. So great things happening at Pembroke Academy, and that's reflected in the student council. That's our presentation, and just wanted to open up to any of you if there's anything I can clarify, and go ahead and keep a bit of happy answering questions for a while.
I don't have any questions. Thanks so much for coming. I think, I personally think P A is a great, sounds like it has great programs, and I think it's a really good option for our students, and I hope, you know, we can see increased numbers since we get P A and taking advantage of your great program.
Yeah, I could be sharing that. So we're going to host a parent night next Monday at six o'clock. We've had a handful of folks sign up, and, you know, we'd be happy to hear more from families that they're looking for work and, you know, how we can support them.
I was just going to add on that I just had Ms. Witty share out a survey for families for K to eight. We're looking at what programs families might be interested in or what they think would meet the needs of their communities so that we can better meet the needs of all of our kids at P A. So we're looking at what programs we might be bringing on in the near future. So if people haven't had a chance to fill that out, please make sure you fill out that survey that Ms. Witty sent out recently.
Awesome. Do you have some questions?
No, thanks so much. I agree with what she said. I hope more of our students go there. Thank you, Ms. Witty.
All right, thank you, folks.
Thank you so much.
All right. I saw Jeannie creep in. Jeannie, we've changed the agenda to put you next, if you are ready.
Mrs. Witty, do you have some of those slides?
Yeah, no, it's in the packet. I think.
I think so.
Oh, do you want to use the four?
Yeah. Would somebody be able to, I just have four emails, and I would just, I have one just.
What's an amaze to get up?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Nope.
Thank you.
I don't mind sharing, and that's fine.
So this came about, Ellen had reached out to Jeannie, I believe, when we started talking about the stage road property and what we should do with it, and Jeannie kindly offered to do a fair market value analysis, is that right? I don't know if that's what it's called, but fair market assessment. So Jeannie is here to share with us some data and some things that she's found when assessing the fair market value potentially of the stage road property.
I do have a copy of a survey, if anyone wanted to look at it at some point in time tonight or in the future. It's nice to get a feel for the configuration of the lot. Before we delve into these listings, I just would like to comment a little bit of background in terms of how this collection of data was chosen. And basically, when you're looking at determining value, you try to find properties that have already closed or sold because that was what someone was willing to pay, as opposed to an active listing, which could be listed high or low or anywhere in between. So given the nature of this particular property, the stage road property, because of the acreage, seventy-eight acres, that the, I had to go out to four counties. And I went back two-year, a two-year marketing period, as well as I used a minimum of twenty-five acres. And the first round of searching pulled up a hundred and twenty-seven. A lot of those were eliminated due to having some sort of asset, a building that needs to be torn down, or a feature that this would not in any way be comparable to the stage road property. So then I pared it down to forty-nine, and I took my mom, and we drove over a period of a few weeks, had a blast, beautiful, beautiful back roads, and, you know, getting off into Loudon and Francis Town and all these kind of cool places. So basically, the site visit to get a feel for location, is this a rural area, is it a commercial area, road frontage, buildability, our subject property here in Deerfield has a fair amount, nine hundred plus or minus feet of road frontage, open land versus, you know, wooded land. And what I did from that, from the point of time where you folks had the public hearing, I wanted to pull in a couple of the categories that had been expressed, conservation, commercial, recreation, and just, I put together those categories and put some sales that reflect larger lots that were used for those categories to give you a range of, you know, are you looking for top-dollar subdivision potential, are you looking for some other aspect that may come forward as a result of your continued thinking about this property and its value to the town? So what we're going to look at quickly is twelve listings that, once again, I hope will be helpful to you in your decision-making. Please understand that I am not an appraiser. I am a, you know, real estate broker, and so I didn't research any of the engineering studies or get into any, like, the stage road parcel. I didn't do a build-out analysis. That is above my scope of area of expertise, and that's where an appraiser would really, you know, if you were wanting to be marketing or needing to fine-tune the highest and best value from a appraisal standpoint, then you need somebody licensed to do that. So, and also lastly, a year from now, these values may be completely different. We've taken a snapshot in time in terms of what I think we're going to, you're going to feel pretty good about the, you know, we're not just showing, throwing the dark. I think there's some good data to kind of guide you to get a feel for the value. So this slide here is actually a little bit later on. The sets, I think I set them to one of four emails. So it should be, this is one, this is two, this is three, this is four. Yes, but that is, I believe, the third email. So if we can find the first email, which
Oh, yeah, we don't typically put emails in the drive, we just put, like, the links.
The data?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like the PDFs of the links.
Okay, well, this link is out of order. So you should have four links, and the first one being Holburn Road in
That's right there.
Excellent, thank you. So there are two listings that, as you can, again, I'm not going to, you can spend ten minutes trying to figure out what I'm speaking to by looking on the screen, whereas on your cheat sheet in front of you, this is a seventy-six-acre parcel in New Boston that had a conservation easement on it. Okay, so this is, this is an important distinction, too. Stage Road does not have any encumbrances. Only in a previous deed, you could not build a mobile home on it. So that's a restriction, okay, that was put into the deed. But these properties have a conservation easement already in place, which would restrict any further building, okay? And you can see that in this year, in September, this is a recent sale in the upper right-hand corner, you dropped that back down, thank you, it sold for two hundred and fifty thousand, okay, with an easement. So it's forever protected in this way. Now, there were a number of sales that were large parcels that had a building lot exemption, and the remainder of the acreage was put in a conservation easement. And that's a different option that a lot of sellers contemplate. They want to preserve, but they also want to gain some value from a building lot. I didn't, I'm just pointing that out as something moving forward. The next slide, which would be Weber Road in Stratford, hopefully, if you scroll down. That's okay. You can keep going down to the next.
You want this document, or you want, is it the next listing?
It's the next list, excuse me. Yeah, sorry. No, I'm sorry, that's from another set.
City Road, Upper City Road?
Weber Road, Stratford. The link that I sent you in the email had both of those listings? Well, we don't have to deliver, I mean, if you're looking at your spreadsheet. Okay. If you're looking at the spreadsheet, Weber Road, Stratford is another conserved piece of property, and it, similarly, it's sixty-three acres, sixty-four acres, and it sold for two fifty. And there are a couple conserved properties that were a little less and a couple that were a little more, but the two fifty for a large piece of property already an easement is a nice stepping-off point for this conversation, okay? So Old Coach Road in New Boston, this is a property that had frontage lots. This was a three lots that were, the purchaser bought the property, subdivided into three lots, and they purchased for three eighty-five, okay? And the only reason why I put this one in and the next one on, actually, you have to drop down to Wilton Road, Mason, number five in your column on page one. That was a property that is four lots, and it's in the planning process now. So it was two thousand one hundred and thirty-five feet of road frontage. So in my opinion, with the stage road, there's ample road frontage, there's like over nine hundred feet frontage, so on paper, it looks like, well, you know, you can just get a couple lots along the front and have excess land to go with it, so they're larger lots. Topography along the road frontage on this parcel is a little bit challenging. The corner near Middle Road kind of dips down, and there's some wetland. The state dictates a common driveway, you know, so you might be, it, there's more value road frontage consistently across the board. Built, as you'll see in some of these other listings, even though parcels had road frontage for easy lots, builders are building a road in to get more lots, okay? So there's more value, the pricing on lots that have, you know, cluster subdivision potential is clearly greater than any road frontage developments that I came across. Okay, so the next one I would like to look at is, and again, we're abandoning the screen here, is the sixth one on your page one, Upper City Road in Loudon. And I'm sorry, you can't see the listings because you get a nice, you get, oh, I'm glad this one at least we have to show. So the acreage, it's a forty-six-acre parcel in Loudon, and look at the road frontage, you know, two hundred feet of frontage, open, field land, agricultural, you know, it's just a beautiful area, everything around it supports, you know, rural, very unique offering, and the very high development potential, yet the owner that, the new owner of this property bought it for a single building lot, and they wanted to retain the agricultural use. This is not an easement situation, but there was a lot of goodwill in the price because this buyer was welcomed in, from the seller's standpoint and the neighborhood in terms of low impact to the neighborhood, retaining the agricultural component of this particular sale. But you can see the open field land, and, you know, the open field land carries, there's not a lot of open farmland for sale, and somebody valued it as reflected in the price of five ninety, okay? So the next one I would like to comment on is the, on your second page, another Deerfield buyer. So what we're looking at now, there's four listings that we're going to look at, that offered a single, a large parcel that was bought by somebody who just wanted one house. So Loudon is one, Deerfield is another. There's on Deer, in Deerfield on Coffeytown Road, there was a hundred and two-acre parcel that, so I'm looking at number ten on the second page of your worksheet. And this was long frontage, almost twenty-five hundred feet of road frontage. There was an investor that bought this, but he's, it's been reported to me that he's bought, he bought it to build his own home and use the property recreationally. So he has since had multiple offers to him as a new owner, much higher than what he paid for. So this, this property is, again, it was indicative of, even though it was one house lot, eight hundred and fifty-five is the sale price. So we're climbing here, and the point, the reason I put the Deerfield sale in is, it's not the hundred and two acres. You know, you cannot, I want, even though there's the price per acre, people tend to gravitate towards price per acre. When you get into these large lot sales, they're not, it's not really a reliable indicator of value. And what is important is really, in each of these sales, it all depended on what the seller was hoping for and what the buyer's intended use was, okay? That is driving this, you know, these numbers. I mean, you're going to see a couple other sales that will hammer that point home, I think. So on to number eight, we just have four more to go here. Now Now we have four properties that are subdivision oriented. And that Mica Drive, that very first one that you had up, is the start. And this is number four on your first page, this was a sale in Raymond, Mica Drive. And this is not really indicative of what I would call a typical subdivision. It is in its layout in terms of you put a road in with a cul-de-sac. This was a, it was approved for, this parcel had already had twelve lots approved. So something's off. Normally, somebody would buy a raw piece of land, spend a hundred thousand plus, much more in some cases, to get the town approvals within eighteen months or a year and a half or two or whatever. And then it's much, it's marketable to a lot more money if it already has approvals. So to have approvals at four fifty, and so to drive in this area is, is like you're driving into a quarry. And there are two houses built already and they're pounding and creating gravel. So I'm not sure if there's value in the creation of all this rock that's being pounded. It's a little, you know, this, right behind these house sites, it's gonna be a sheer wall of ledge. You know, it's really different. So I, just because, so this price point isn't really, I don't think, comparable to the stage road lot. But it's with local and I figured I couldn't just ignore it. And back to the bottom of page one, you have Twist Hill Road in Dunbarton. This sale is probably the most like the stage road property in that they, the road, Twist Hill Road, as you drive down and approach the subdivision there in this parcel, they are, the town already had little road cuts in, so you could see how many houses could be along the road. But the builder purchased it without any approvals for seven hundred and twenty-five. And they're putting in a road for ten lots, they're gonna need private well and septic. So we're not comparing against a town that has the community water and septic. And, you know, seven hundred and twenty-five thousand, as you said. And similarly, if you go over to River Road and Ware, this was another very comparable setting, if you will, in terms of, you know, kind of a, River Road isn't a Route forty-three, but I stretched the imagination, but they purchased the property for seven fifty, a hundred and ten acres, and then they got approval for eighteen lots and they're already, you know, building them now. So we've got two sales, raw land, needs approvals, seven fifty, okay? Again, another kind of number that you can sit on or stand on and step off of more, if you get more detail. And then the number eleven, Eighth Fordway Road, also in Raymond. This is a property that they're purchased with no approvals. And they're trying now and they're in the planning stages and they'd like to put in a road for a nine lot cul-de-sac. And even though Raymond does have town waters, who are in some places, not in this location. Now, there's a property that, there's a home on this property that needs to be demoed, so there's gonna be some subtraction for getting rid of an older house on the property. So that leaves us, which is one other to comment on, and that is number Scribner Road in Fremont, number twelve. This property is a twenty-five acre that sold for nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. It was marketed with subdivision potential, but the buyer was a neighbor. And he, they were interested in maybe having a property for kids in the future. So they had no plans for a big subdivision. And so the, you know, in a sense, this is a, an investor type buyer that has, and there are a lot of investor type buyers out there that are buying these parcels and just sitting on them. You know, so it's not immediate threat, but without any, you know, if the property doesn't have any restriction on it, they could build and they could turn around the next year and change their mind and put in a subdivision.
That's what we were doing, we're just investing.
Well, what did you pay, three seventy-five? I think you've done pretty well.
That's how this was approved, yeah.
Right, so JCR had a fifteen lot subdivision approved on this parcel. And there's infrastructure on the parcel. And I don't know, and this is an appraiser question, I don't know the value of the road. I mean, current, there's, there's infrastructure in there besides the road, there's piping for underground, there's, I believe, cisterns already in place.
This is Stadron that we're talking about. This is Stadron?
Yes. So, you know, again, it depends on the intended use of the property. If, you know, somebody's, well, we don't have to think about that tonight. So, you know, we're, the range being two fifty to, you know, a million dollars or under a million dollars, you know, depending on where you're going, what are you marketing? Who are you marketing to? Their butters are are strong buyers right now, they're looking to preserve certain aspects of the property that are, they value. And so that's all I have to do.
Awesome, that's, thank you so much. That list, I think, for us puts us in some sort of a ballpark to know what we're potentially talking about when we're making, making decisions about how or if to move forward or if we just wanna keep investing for twenty more years. That's very helpful. I, I can't believe you drove around to all these places, thank you so much.
Happy to, it was, it's very important to know. Again, we could rule out, you know, if a large parcel just had this little, you know, fifty-foot right of way versus, you know, frontage. Again, we're trying to match, the goal is to try to match as best you can. And in terms of frontage and topography and woods and, you know, versus open field land. That is just jaw dropping, they're beautiful with views and everything else, so.
Gee, is there, is there a lot of what?
On the stage road? The, there's a little pocket, if you go straight in and then head to east, there's a little pocket that isn't, I say little pocket, it's substantial, it's not open water, but it clearly is wetland. And in that front left corner, there clearly is wetland area. What I will note, and this is probably only of interest, not of general interest, but there's a really nice low pocket of some hemlocks that are doing very well with no adalgent aphids. So we're hoping that there are gonna be pockets like this that are gonna be pulling through and get through this infestation that they've been assailing with. But that was, that was worth the trip out there just to. But it, topography wise, the road goes in and has a nice rise. And then it's relatively flat, but it's really, that's where a lot of ledge is, and then the land is rolling. So it's, and boulders, I mean, you could move this and it'd feel very much akin to a tuckaway. You know, there's really nice, you know, not huge collections on them, but there are rocks everywhere, big boulders everywhere. But it's nice open woods, you know, once you get away from that road cut that was put in twenty years ago, two thousand and one, you know, they did some clearing around that road, so it's kind of, the rocks got pushed over and then it kind of drops down and it's thick with regrowth. But the rest of the woods are open and very pleasant, I mean, they're rolling around and nice stone walls, you're not gonna get lost. There's stone wall boundaries all the way around with two cross sections that are not. What I was surprised at was the river isn't really a feature of this property. The river is in the area, I mean, it it clearly is there, but the Nolts, Peter Nalt owns across one oh seven and picks up a slice of that land. So this property has very little, like, you don't have river frontage. It does, on the board, that's just.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I was thinking about this, but I wanted to throw this out here to the board, but I was thinking maybe we would put together with community involvement, like a committee or someone, Conservation Commission, someone, you know, just looking for that, to really kind of go through all the ideas that we got.
And make a recommendation.
Yeah, and research it all and, I mean, look at that engagement. I feel like there's a lot there that we still don't really know, that we haven't answered.
For sure.
And it needs to be done in that kind of a way.
I think that's a good idea. Um, so then potentially be good, next year, make a.
Exactly, yeah. So that for next year, we'll maybe have a better, we'll have a good idea of what we wanna do.
Yeah, I would love, I would love for people to really devote some time to this and then make a recommendation to the board. I mean, we don't have to necessarily go with the recommendation, but.
Like, I heard that from the Conservation Commission, they had had a meeting about it, and I know they feel that it should be conserved.
Yeah.
I mean, and that's one of the options, and there are other options, but I think it would be the best to really focus carefully.
Right, could you, could you do sort of both, best of both worlds, conserve part of it?
Yeah.
Sell part of it, right, so.
Sounds like that is an option.
I also wonder if there could be an educational component too, since it's owned by the school.
Right, can, should the school retain a portion of it?
Yeah, I don't know, yeah, so that's another option, so, I mean, I'd be willing to take that on. She says.
Yeah, I would say.
Very reluctant.
A- after NBC meetings every Tuesday?
Well, that'll be ending pretty soon, it'll be your business.
For you.
Pretty soon, yeah.
I'll probably still go to listen, at least I don't have to sit there.
I would, how, okay, how do we get a committee?
How do we get?
Start, I mean, I think we would have to put out a call for committee members.
Yeah, we have to look for committee members to go and.
So we could, I mean, we could put out, it might be easier to do like a survey that people respond to or some, some way, some unified way, like, if they're interested, email directly to you or directly to Kendra, and then it comes to the board and the, and the committee is like it, I don't.
So would it make, I mean, it would be, so we should put it in the bridge, maybe? I was wondering, we could also send an email to the heads of the different committees.
Yeah. Um, I also do happen to know, because I got an email, that the winter edition of the Doryer Gazette has a deadline of November fifteenth, I believe.
Oh, so Arrow可能会be put, so we've been back.
Yeah, something in there.
Okay.
About, so we could do sort of something about the stage road property in general.
Yeah.
Um, saying that we're soliciting ideas and we're coming up with a committee.
You said November fifteenth?
I think so.
I'll ask you.
Yeah, I would ask, 'cause he emailed me the other day, I don't.
I told him that.
Before you, before you put something, posting out, you wanna let people know how to.
Yes.
Where to comment or where to solicit.
So should I have them? To you?
I can, that, that would be fine.
I mean, I don't, I don't care how to do it, I just.
They can email me and I can just create like a, a document of all interested meetings.
I just wanna tell it the right way.
They wanna take that?
Why, that's fine. I can, you don't have to email me, like, we also could do that.
We don't have to, I mean, it, it can be like to us, I just wanna make sure.
I, I'm on my email every day and I get hundreds of emails a day, so it makes sense.
Well, yeah, but you get hundreds of emails a day.
Yeah, but I have a system for checking that. So like, it would be easier if mass emails came to me than one of you who doesn't have that, you know, capacity of email coming through every day.
Should we put a deadline of when they should let us know by, so?
I would, yeah.
So maybe if, he can put it out November fifteenth, I can send that email.
I don't know when, well, I don't know when the, it actually, actually it's published. So the deadline for submission, yeah.
Okay. That's a good point, I'll, I'll talk to him about that.
But you have the beauty of time on your side, so like, because you have a whole year before something needs to happen.
Right, yes. Yeah. Right.
And so you could even say that you, January first, even for deadline of submission.
January thirtieth.
And then, you know, you, you would wanna put out what your intentions are, right? So for a committee to be selected by January thirty-first. Um, and that way it gives you guys a month to make those donations to the board. There's also another newsletter in town.
Yeah.
Do you know about that?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think they have a, an email like.
Which day now?
How, how, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I would just email like whatever email is on, they have a Facebook page, I don't remember. But I would, if we're, I don't know if, they seem to do around the same time, but I would maybe do both, just.
I know. Okay, do both and then maybe we put something in the bridge and then I could contact the chairs of the, of all boards and just say,
Say, if you're interested.
we're giving you, is there a member of the board who would be interested in joining this committee? And can there be two school board members on it?
Yeah. I would just say limit it to two, because that way you're not having a core.
Right, we can't have, we can't have a core.
But we do need to take minutes, I think, for the.
Yes, well, I can, we learned that, right?
Well, and you, and you'll wanna do an official, at some point, either today or the next time you meet, you're gonna wanna officially establish it as a committee, so you need a motion of, that kind of stuff.
Okay.
Should we just do that now?
Should we do that now? Let's do it now, then I go up here, I don't have a bunch of stuff on my, case in my head. All right, I move that we create a committee to research the stage road property with the possibility of what we might wanna do with it in future.
Second. Is that good enough?
Okay.
We need to vote, we need to vote.
Okay, yeah, yeah. Did you have to?
Just a clarification, what's going out? Is it?
Solicitation of.
Ask, looking for people to be on this committee.
Committee members.
Okay, it is committee, 'cause I thought I heard what to do with the road and I thought we already sent something out about that.
Well. Well, I'm just saying, like, when we're posting it in the Doryer Gazette or wherever, saying like, we have this property, what should we do with it? We're forming a committee, do you wanna be on the committee?
Okay, I, I just wanted clarification.
Yeah, and we could also say that we had a.
Was that a public hearing?
Yeah.
Or was it just a?
Public forum.
A public forum. I mean, we could also say we had a public forum and these are some of the ideas we got, but we're looking to do a formal committee.
No, I just, I just wanted a clarification of.
Right, and I think we can also encourage people to contact us even if they don't wanna be on the committee.
Sure.
With, with ideas.
What's the timeframe of, of possibly doing something?
Next year. I anticipate we would put something on the warrant, maybe.
For the phone.
Yeah, yeah.
It'd be a warrant.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay, not the hand game.
Yeah, no, it's, we need the background.
We started talking about it, 'cause we thought about this year and then it just, we're like, no, we can't.
Yeah, the timeframe would be very.
Yeah. Too rushed, right.
Right.
And then how big do you want this committee? Because if you're soliciting community, community members, you probably shouldn't limit it to like five, right?
Not terribly, but. No, no, yeah.
'Cause that might be too little.
Right.
Especially if you're asking for community input.
Right, it might end up being.
So like, maybe max ten?
Maybe like ten.
Yeah.
I would go more than twelve.
Yeah.
Yeah, you get too many people and nothing gets done.
And just even. Logistically scheduling. Yeah, yes, yeah, okay, yeah. Well, you might have to do a combo of like remote and, 'cause you're gonna be meeting in the winter too, so
Oh, true. Yeah.
Maybe while you're getting established, you could start as remote meetings or do a blend, do inverse and and remote so that people couldn't join, could call in or whatever. All right, you guys didn't vote yet, so.
Okay.
There is a pending motion on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Four oh.
Okay.
Cool, cool. Oh, no, I lost. All right, we are on to facilities updates. If Chris would like to join us, we also moved you around, I don't, I don't have you here for that, but we bumped you up.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Thanks.
Let there be light.
What?
Yeah, let there be light.
Let there be light, yes, there is, uh, first time in.
Very pleased.
We.
Yeah.
Okay. Yep, we've got packing light lighting.
Looks great, yeah.
It does look really good.
Yep, I think there's a couple heads that need, the heads are movable.
Oh.
And so I've already tilted a couple up to broadcast the light a little more. Um, I've got three more heads that I think I'll bring up just to increase the coverage for the light. So, yep, they look great, happy with everything, sorry for so long, but. Um, increase the coverage for the light, so, yep, they look great, happy with everything, sorry for so long, but. We uh, we uh, um, went to shoot, thank you very much for last uh, last week, the little cinnamon roll that you dropped off.
Oh.
At my desk.
Well, you, I saw you outside, but then when I went looking for you, I couldn't find you, so I just left you.
Cinnamon roll was nice, I also like chocolate chip cookies.
Oh, yeah, keep that in mind.
And as a side note, he makes delicious cinnamon bread. He's a baker.
Yeah. Uh-oh, now I put the shame.
The number five, six and below that, I'm not gonna cover that tonight, because I'm not really in a good place to uh.
Yeah, and it's canonized here, yeah, yeah.
And, yes, so.
In a system other than that. Yeah, we're hoping to have more for our next meeting.
Yeah, okay.
So, parking lot light is good, solar update, hopefully next week we are anticipating the. The last piece that ties everything in and then we're gonna have, still have to go through the inspection. From New Hampshire Electrical Co-op, so that could still take until the end of the month, maybe a little longer, we're not sure. Um, no one can give us a date on that until we've submitted all the paperwork.
Chris, what's your best guess for switching on solar at this point, if you had to put a date on it?
End of December.
End of December, so new year.
Yes, yeah, new year, end of December, sooner than later.
Okay.
Before we get snow, I'd like to see what, you know.
Yeah.
See what, see how the dial is gonna turn.
Yeah.
We are absent for bacteria, we had that little problem over the summer, um, that's been cleared, um. Two reasons, one was the chlorine, um. That we added into the water to run it through the system and we also found a couple mop sinks that were tied in with Ys. Our hot water pressure, because it's so close to the kitchen, is greater than our cold water, which is on the exterior of the building. We figured out that that was kind of pushing a little more hot water into the system than it should, we dislocate, we disconnected. The cold water to those taps, or I'm sorry, we disconnected the hot water from those taps, so they're just running on cold water. Which is the way the chemicals were meant to be used, so that cleared it up and gave us an absent bacteria reading. Um. We just had our fuel tank inspected, we, every year that we go to bid for our propane and heating oil, each company comes in, inspects the tank. Um, that was inspected and we did find a little, it's not leaking, but around at the bottom drain, it's. Oily, so it's, we're researching that more, um, but there's, it's not leaking on the ground, so we're kind of like scratching our heads at that minute, at that moment. Uh, it's, in November, we'll be having the septic tank pumped, we pump the septic tank twice a year, November and in March, uh. April vacation, and that's about all I have for fun updates.
Awesome.
Questions, concerns?
Any questions?
Great, great.
All right, great.
Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you so much, Chris. All right, now. On to the good stuff.
Good side of the stuff.
The budget. Got my highlighters ready, my multi-color pens, we are ready to go.
Well, and your highlighters and multi-color pens might be a little bit more difficult in the way of the more approachable tonight.
Okay.
It is a little differently than I've done in the past, each year I try to do something a little bit different to see what really works. Um, I tested this out with Pembroke last night and it worked really well, um, so hopefully you'll like it as well. I think it's a little easier to digest what's going on, um, so last year I came forth with a presentation and I did. You know, line this, amount this, and I kind of go through and it's a lot of information to absorb in a short amount of time. So, this time I took it, I'll look at it a little bit differently. Um, I'm gonna approach it as uh addressing kind of uh the important factors and takeaways. And then I will also give a summary for each subgrouping as I've done in the past, eleven hundred, twelve hundred and so forth. And also highlight in each of those sub areas, um, the difference that the default takes, what it includes or what it doesn't include. Um, so the approach is a little bit different in the sense that I'm not gonna say line twenty seven increased by X amount of dollars. That I don't have in this presentation, you'll be able to see that in your budget packet. Um, just so that you're not trying to bounce around as I'm talking and trying to figure out where I'm talking about. Certainly, we can go line by line and certainly we can talk about certain lines, but just as an overview to give it to you at first, I'm gonna kind of highlight some things. So you have two packets, you have um the budget summary, which is what I'm gonna go over, and then you have your actual budget packet that has your budget. Uh, as well as the backup documentation included. Okay, any questions or concerns with that? Okay, so the first part I did was I, I tried to give a snapshot on, you know, one of the reasons why we moved towards getting a principal's budget. Initially with the school boards, um, rather than a full budget is so that the school board and the the district and the town can kind of gauge. What the school district needs or to operate instruction. What is the why, because it's so easy to just grab the budget, flip to the back page and say, okay, and increase by X amount of dollars. But it doesn't allow us to focus on the why, um, so that's one of the reasons why we, you know, introduced a couple years ago. With the principals presenting the building instructional budget first, and then I come back with the overhead. The, you know, really the bulk of the, the cost of what it, it, what it takes to run a school district. So the first section that I have here on our budget summary in orange is kind of a snapshot of first what was voted. Um, what the proposed is and then what the proposed default is. The reason why I did a snapshot right at the beginning, um, and wanted to focus, because if you were one that went all the way to the end. It looks like the budget has increased by three hundred and seventy thousand dollars. It actually has increased by six hundred and thirty, and the reason being is, at the very end of the budget is the warrant articles that were approved at the last budget session. We don't currently have any warrant articles included, because those don't get added until after the vote in March. So there's a two hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of warrant articles that it looks like there's a negative, but there's really not. It's just, there's nothing included, um, so I just wanted to be transparent and say, yes, I realize the budget really is up. Six hundred and thirty thousand, not three hundred and seventy. Okay. Um, I still think it's good for Deerfield, I think in the last several years, we've come forth, um, at this time of year with a much more substantial increase than what we're presenting you with tonight. Um, so the overall increase is about, it's about three percent to start here. Um, that includes everything in your building needs as well as your overhead, um, and some other items throughout the budget. So some of the key um pieces I wanted to talk about, to highlight first, to give subsections, um, is the instruction and special education. Now, some of these things I'm gonna talk about, um, this withy, you know, spoke about in the last meeting, and I'm just gonna kind of highlight to give you an overview of the entire budget. So the largest cost driver, driver on for instructional education obviously is your high school tuition. The high school tuition that I have included in your budget are estimates at this point, because one, we don't know exactly which students are going where. We have an idea, but it's still an estimate. We also have, um, we have received the tuition amount for Concord, um, we are still waiting the tuition amount for Co-Brown. Um, I believe the tuition amount that I've included for Pembroke Academy will probably be that, but I would like to take one more look at it before I finalize it. So that's why you'll see, you know, an EST beside it, it's the estimate.
Did you just do like a three percent increase or something?
I did not, I did the actual exercise of what it is, but I, I'd like to go back and look at it a few more times. Um, and some of the reason being is, is enrollment has been changing pretty dramatically, um, monthly. And it's really hard to capture what enrollment is going to be like next year, when you're utilizing just the September and October numbers. I'd like to try to get a couple months, um, to include that information in my database.
I meant the tuition of Co-Brown, did you just have an estimate of?
Oh, Co-Brown, um, we used, um, what did we, I think we did do any.
It was an estimate based on our.
Like a three percent.
I think we did do an estimate, yes.
Yes.
It was an estimate based on what has been the trajectory.
It's sort of almost typically, yeah.
Yeah.
And they said by our next time we meet, we should have actual numbers, they, they were in process, so.
Okay. So you got him from Concord?
Yeah.
We did get him from Concord, yep, yep, I kept on him. I emailed them really early on and I said, I, this is when my board meeting is, can I please have it, um, and he, he delivered, so, which I appreciate. Um, but I believe, I wanna say we use maybe, I, maybe it was like five percent increase or so for Co-Brown, um, somewhere around that. Um, but that will be, you know, at the next present.
Right.
Yeah.
Presentation of our revenue. So we, um, right now for the estimate, um, we, you know, we, it increased from four point one to four point four. Um, we are basing it on two hundred and eleven students, um, the current fiscal year has two hundred and seven. How we arrive at that is we take out the twelfth graders that are leaving and bring in the eighth graders.
And did they already fill out the survey where they wanna go, or are we just?
They're working, they're working for fourteen minutes too.
Okay, so we're just estimating numbers based on.
I gave Amber the best.
We, yeah, some of the things, so we know some of the numbers of where some of the students are going and then we kind of split the difference between the two schools.
Sure. Yeah. Okay.
We, we had received about twenty or so responses, out of class, it's about fifty five.
Okay.
So we haven't received all of them, um, with Co-Brown having their tours, their, they're. In November, uh, actually this week, I think, yeah.
Today.
Okay.
And Concord's year or.
And so, one of the things that is a little more helpful this year than it was this current fiscal year is that. I'm not saying that it's a positive, um, but the tuition rates for potentially Co-Brown and Concord are very similar.
Right.
Whereas this current fiscal year, there was a little bit of disparity, um, so when we did the kind of like almost fifty, I think we actually did a sixty forty split, if I remember correctly. Um, the, the amount shouldn't change dramatically, whether they go to Co-Brown or, um, if they go to Concord. It will save some money if they were to go to Pembroke Academy, because that is a couple thousand dollars less.
It's gone up quite a bit though, huh?
I, they have, and that is because of enrollment has dropped, um, significantly, we've, Prospect Mallin, I'm not sure if you've heard anything about that, but there's some enrollment, um, changes with Prospect Mallin. So that's caused, um, some challenges. But you never know what's gonna come through the works and we, you know, it could all turn around, um, but that is the reason why that's increased. It was sixteen nine, I think it was before, and now we're estimating eighteen four, so it has gone. So, all right, so then, um, some of the other key points are technology, software licensing, some Chromebooks for the fifth graders coming in. Updating some older devices, there's been no staffing changes for FTE, changes in regular education. The, the increases that you're going to see when you look through here are strictly, um, because of the CBA or any personnel changes. Um, curriculum additions to help support math literacy, as they talked about the last time. Um, there has been some savings in special education in regards to out of district placement, about ninety two thousand dollars for that area. And then also summer programs going down a little bit by eight thousand, those are strictly based on, uh, student, um, needs and the changes that are occurring with those particular students. And, and what we will believe will happen for next year. There has been a slight reduction in paraprofessionals, um, in the FTEs, and that again is just to align with the student needs that we currently have.
Is it to align with them, or is it just 'cause we can't hire them?
No, it's to align them.
Yeah. 'Cause we have trouble.
If we can't hire them, we still keep an open position in, in hopes to, to hire the positions.
Yeah. That's right, that's.
We would never get rid of a position, 'cause it's hard.
That's what I'm trying to change in them, but, okay, sorry.
Yeah. No, no. Um, so the total impact of eleven hundred, mostly the, it's really, we're trying to sustain the programming that we currently have. Um, obviously, the high school obligation, um, has, you know, continues to have modest growth, um, and it continues to be one of the largest costs of, of factors for, um, the budget. Uh, the total impact for the twelve hundreds, uh, it's nearly level funded, as you're gonna see when you go through the budget, it's about a point six eight percent growth. Um, and again, that's aligning with the changes that are, that are occurring, um, within that subsection of the budget. And what we're, I think we're finally starting to see a little bit of stabilization, um, and now Ms. Vicfurd, um. You know, last year has done a ton of work and has continued to go from, to on-ramp, so we really are, um, trying to hone in on exactly what these students need. And what it takes to deliver those services. For personnel costs, the proposed, um, budget maintains, um, level staffing except for one additional FTE, um, which was requested in facilities for a night, um, staff member. Um, we are, we are honoring the negotiated salaries and benefits for the CBAs and, uh, it also contains, um, the modest increases. Um, that we have had for personnel, so one of the things you're gonna notice in regards to, um, personnel increases is. Anybody that's not covered by a collective bargaining agreement, the CD, the, not the CBA, the default is not gonna carry forward any of those increases. That have been approved over the last couple of years, it reverts back, um, to several years ago. Um, so we talked about that last year, so that's not anything new, but you'll notice some big changes in that area. So really, that's in your, um, administration staff, your facilities, um, secretaries, things like that, in those areas. Health insurance, um, and retirement costs remain the primary budget pressures, um, you know, we've been talking about at, you know, the SAU full board meeting in regards to health insurance. We are, we have not received the current health insurance rates for next year yet, it's usually between November eighth and tenth, we receive those. Um, some of the subtle that we've heard through the grapevine is they're looking between a twelve to fifteen percent increase, um, for their members. Could it come in less than that? It certainly can. Um, last year, I wanna say I heard it was between eight and ten percent, and what I can tell you is, is some of our districts received as low as like a three to four percent. So it really depends on your district's utilization, um, in terms of capturing costs as of right now. Um, I elected to go with the highest risk we believe could occur, and then when we get the rates, we'll be able to drop the budget. Um, but I would rather give you a picture of what your highest risk hopefully would be, rather than give you a five to six or seven percent and then come back with a large increase.
Are they looking at other healthcare providers?
We are looking at other healthcare providers, we are, uh, we are out to bid currently, um, looking at what other options we might have.
I heard there's gonna be a lawsuit too against School Care.
Um, by, by, they wouldn't, I have not heard about that, but I know that there are several, um, school districts or individuals that are reaching out to at the state level. To see if they could potentially waive the assessment and or waive the interest that they state that will come into play if you do not pay your assessment by June.
I believe there was a email that went out to some of the New Hampshire School Board Association board members too, so maybe a couple of you got that email. Um, in regards to partnering with Lebanon, maybe, I think it was on the west side.
Yeah, there was Lebanon on the west side.
Well, they, they brought it up at the School Board Association meeting, and it, they were looking to get schools together to partner with their lawsuits, so that's why I brought it up.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm, I'm not surprised, I know there's a lot of discussion going on.
Yeah. Won't help us for this budget.
No.
It will not help you for this budget, I, we, you know, potentially moving forward, um, there could be some changes. Um, we're estimating about an increase of five percent for dental, um, your budget actually decreased. Uh, so I know that seems a little ironic in regards to that area, but it's because when I say an amount is, isn't going to increase by ten or fifteen. You're not taking the current, multiplying it by fifteen, because there's also plan and personnel changes to those, that's the reason why. Um, we've seen over the last several years, uh, dental increase between three to five percent, so again, I went with the five percent. Um, several years ago, we actually had no increases, uh, I think it was like two to three years in a row, um, which is, is rare. All right, so facilities and operations, um, where the, this has gone up about six point seven percent. Um, and re, in the, really the driver for that increase is the additional position that's been, is being requested for, um. Um, and re, in the, really, the driver for that increase is the additional position that's been, is being requested for, um, the night custodian. Uh, there, which includes preventative maintenance, um, and then some of those things have also gone down. Um, you're gonna notice that there's a saving in the modular. We, as you remember, the last fiscal year, we purchased those modulators, so we will no longer have that regular one. Um, so that does offset some of the increase that are occurring in this section of the budget.
I, have we, um, accounted for any, uh, savings for solar? Or is it like too premature because we just don't know?
Yeah. I I have not taken in any of those into this con, into consideration. I think it's going to take, you know, at least a year to see kind of what's going on.
Yeah.
Definitely, you know, for the next, not this upcoming budget cycle bu, se, cycle, but the following one, I'll be able to have a little bit of data to say, okay, while it might not be a full year.
Right.
Um, can take some of it into consideration, but without knowing what it's gonna do, I I've continued on status quo, and anything that shows as a savings, um, will be in the benefit for the district.
Okay.
Uh, we, the district continues to prioritize building upkeep, energy management, um, and operation safety. Um, there's no real big, um, new capital projects that are included in the budget. Um, any of those are maybe up for discussion for later on with trust funds, but in the actual budget, there's no big capital projects. For transportation, um, we do have a decrease in transportation of a hundred and sixteen thousand. That's mostly due to special education. Um, for transportation for regular education, we are currently out to bid. Um, originally, the proposals will do on the seventh, so next Friday. We have actually moved it an additional week and given them, uh, one extra week to come up with some proposals. Um, so they're now due on the fourteenth. The reason for that being is we have had some interest from some other vendors.
Oh.
Yes, which is great. Um, and so when a couple of them asked if we were gonna extend the deadline. Uh, and originally, I said no, because we've got, we need to get numbers for budgets. Um, but with that said, I certainly don't want some individuals or vendors to not participate because they don't have enough time to pull some information together. One of the other things I did differently, um, this time around than I have done in the past, is usually I send out the RFP and I, it is one RFP. While they do break out the individual cost for each of the districts within that one RFP, um, it does award one vendor the contract. This year, I've decided to break it out into individual. So each district, or four of the five districts, um, each have their own individual RFP. So that allows smaller vendors, if they can only take on one district or two districts, um, they may have the opportunity to do that. But it does also still allow them to provide a proposal for all four.
Do you think, um, I mean, this might not be possible for you to answer, but if like one of the districts left and went to another vendor, would the cost increase for the other districts be?
It, um, it's po, it's potential, it's possible. I know that one of the vendors that is submitting, um, proposals is submitting it both ways. They're submitting it, this is what it would cost if I were to take on one or two or each one of these or whatever it may be. And then what it would cost if we were to take all of them. Um, so until I see what their proposals look like, um, I would guess there would probably be a six, somewhat of a savings. I would anticipate if they received all four, because that's a good amount of business that they're receiving, um.
And that gets voted on at executive board?
Uh, we have, yes, we have.
Okay.
Um, I don't know what we want to handle, we'll have to talk about how that's gonna be handled. It's been handled at the executive board level before because it was one.
Right, right.
Now there is individually.
Yeah, I mean.
It may shift.
It would be unfortunate if one district got a really sweetheart deal and the other ones had to pay more because of that. So that, I just don't know how to deal with that, like, across the SAU.
Oh, one hundred percent. Uh, what I will say is there has never been a time when transportation proposals haven't come in that I haven't gone back to renegotiate.
Sure.
Um, so certainly, if one district has, you know, substantially higher rates, there will be further discussion.
Yeah.
Um, I think it, I think it somewhat might lead itself to be that because of
Sure.
the areas in which they are covered. Um, it might be easier for them to cover, um, de- depending on where their location is, a location that's closer to them where, or a district that's not as widespread. So routes aren't, you know. So I I think it'll really depend on what what we get. I'm really excited, I'm pretty positive we're gonna get at least two, maybe more. Um, so, that's exciting.
Yeah. Very.
And I'll just jump in here, that a majority of those cost savings in the special ed line are because you put in the, um, bus to Co Brown, right, so.
Yeah, I was, I was figuring that, yeah.
Yes, I, there you go.
So for the, for the transportation, are we still figuring two buses to Concord and one bus to Co Brown?
Yes, I have three high school buses and seven elementary buses budgeted. I did budget for now, um, ju, to have a number in here, I did about an eight percent increase in the regular ed transportation. Um, and then it also includes McKinney Vento.
Yeah.
The special ed, um, transportation company, we still have another year on that contract, so that will be, you know, come the following year. Your McKinney Vento funding is thirty-five thousand for next year. So other support services, so these are things that are, um, are outside of health and dental insurance. Um, they include your FICA, your retirement, and those types of things. Um, that's about a three point seven percent increase. Um, and the majority of that really has to do with, uh, we've had, like, workers' comp went up a little bit. Um, so we've had some increases in some of those areas. Um, but really, they align with the CBA increases that are are really already in effect. Again, the capital, um, improved, um, capital reserve and expendable trust are not included. So it looks like there's a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar reduction. There isn't, you know, if and when any warrant articles get approved in March, after that happens, it'll go into the line, um, and then the difference will show there. So my guess is there probably wouldn't, unless you do not intend to put any more under this board.
I understand.
The food service, this reflects a conservative approach, leveraging the existing fund balance that we have, and we're also anticipating some lower propane taxes. Uh, so really, some proposed, um, budget key takeaways is that the proposed budget's up about three percent. Um, we're really balancing the increases of that, uh, health insurance, tuition and transportation. Those are really your largest drivers that are driving that three percent. And, um, you know, we really just continue to hope to support special education, um, student support, and operational, keep our operational, um, facilities, you know, stable. We've really done a lot of work, the district has done a ton of work over the last several years in getting this building, um, you know, up to par. Uh, and in keeping these capital projects going is really gonna help the sustainability, um, to make sure that we don't in one year have something at large that really affects you, the budget. So, you know, forward planning is what we will continue to do. Any questions on that before I get into a summary on each of the subsections?
What about, um, buses? Are we using seven for?
We do not currently use seven.
We don't have seven.
Right.
But that's due to the bus driver shortage.
Right. How many are?
Six.
Six.
Six buses and that seventh bus went to Co Brown.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. And so I will say that in the RFP process, um, there have been seventeen questions from vendors um, that have come through in regards to what we're looking for for our needs and so forth. Um, and so when questions come in for an RFP, I put together a document so that everybody gets the exact same, that everybody knows what questions have been asked and everybody receives the same response. So I then get that posted on the website underneath our RFP so that everybody that is submitting a proposal gets the same information. Um, I include it as an addendum and do require them to, um, reveal it in silence so that they know, um, what everybody else wants.
Yeah, and I don't know if there's any way to do this, but is there any priority given to someone who could guarantee us a certain number of buses versus a cheaper rate, but they can't give us all the buses that we have?
Well, what I will tell you is that I did note in the RFP that it will not be based on lowest cost necessarily.
Right.
It'll be based on what the district's needs are.
Right.
Um, and so, um, that is outlined in the RFP a couple times. Um, and I did have somebody, one of the vendors specifically ask me.
Okay.
So, um, I try to tend to not, really, in most of the RFPs that I create, um, not have costs as the determining factor.
Yeah.
Um, because I'm a true component of who gets what you pay for.
Right.
So sometimes the lowest cost is not beneficial. I've I've entered into some construction projects when I used to work for the community college system and and everything was lowest bid. Um, and some of those projects were not successful in regards to their final diligence, so, um, I try to steer away from it. All right, um, so the next area that I'm gonna go over, I'm just kinda, kind of like what I've done in the past, but the only thing I'm not gonna do is reference into individual lines. Um, and the other thing I'm I'm doing that's a little bit different is I'm gonna touch on the default change in that subcategory at the same time. So regular educational programs, um, we're proposing eight point one million dollars, which is an increase of three hundred and ninety-eight thousand. Uh, this reflects the CBA, um, changes for both teacher and support staff. It also includes your classroom instructional materials, your textbooks, your supplies. Really, a lot of the things that Miss Withy went over at the last budget meeting. As well as your high school tuition also lives in this section. So two hundred and ninety-eight thou, uh, thousand dollars of that increase is, um, is reflective of that increase.
So a hundred thousand.
So a hundred thousand.
Is really everything else.
Everything else, like, the cost that we could actually control.
Right, it's the cost of your CBA increases and any, um, instructional materials that have been added or subtracted. Uh, I think when you go through the budget, you're gonna find that there's a lot of, uh, level funding that that has gone on. We really are really pressing and stressing, uh, that when we budget, it's really important that we budget for what we need for next year. Not because of what we have budgeted in the past, but what we believe we need for next year. I think it's really important, um, that we are only adding in the budget what we believe we're gonna need. And so there's also some Chromebook replacements in there. And so for the default summary, the personnel remain the same, there's no change in that because there's no FTE changes. Um, the interns and the substitutes are restored back to the current default budget. We have budgeted less for those, um, but it would revert back to default, should a default come into play. Um, there has been a reduction in contracted services, parts and subscriptions. Some of those were one-time expenses, um, and or have been moved to another section.
So if I read you right, you're saying that the interns, the substitutes, the contractors, all that stuff is actually less than the default budget?
Correct. That is correct. Any questions on the eleven hundreds? All right, for the twelve hundreds, this is your special education. We are anticipating an increase of thirty-six thousand, sixty-five dollars. Yes, I said thirty-six thousand.
Yes. I wow, I am honestly shocked.
I wish I could take credit for it, but I'm not. But I did wanna repeat that.
Yeah, that is, that's truly shocking.
Um, so this does also include the, um, CBA increases for both teacher and support, um, staff. Uh, it includes the in in district program needs and therapy costs. Out of district tuition and summer placement has declined, which is partially offsetting some of the other changes that are occurring in this section. Paraprofessional staffing was reduced by one FTE, again, to align with the current needs for those students. For the default summary, uh, the personnel remains the same. The default also takes into consideration any changes in services as they are one-time expenses. Um, we we base those off each each year what the needs are for that year. The default does not include a salary increase for the special education coordinator. That is one of the admin positions that I mentioned earlier. Because that is not driven by a CBA, um, it would revert back to the default. It's not to say that the board can't find funding elsewhere, but we cannot budget for it. In the default. Any questions on special education? And Andre will go over, unless you wanna go over now, do you want to?
It might make sense just to hit it now, let it on it.
Yeah. But, uh, Andre has a little bit of a presentation for you, um, so maybe we can do that now?
Right, sure.
Um, so you have seen this before, it's just in a different format so that you can see side by side
Sure.
what, um, what it was last year compared to what it was this year. I do wanna do a shout out to Lisa, cuz I, her and her team have, the numbers are the way they are because her and her team have worked so hard to really, um, identify what student needs are and really hone in on those needs, um, and, uh, but not put in more than what is needed. So, um, that's, that is important to note here. Um, uh, so if you're looking at, um, placements, um, that has, um, gone up or gone down a little with, um, the pre K through eight, but has gone up a little with the nine through twelve. Um, this is just because of the movement of students from the elementary level to the high school level. Um, we don't have a whole lot of kiddos graduating, um, so these needs are kept within that. Um, but you can see the, um, the, um, how these play from, um, year to year. Um, with, we broke them down between, uh, the high school numbers so that you guys would have all of those numbers.
So, sorry, just for people to recall, so special placements for pre K through eight is all out of district.
Yeah.
For K through eight.
For K through eight.
Correct.
And then for high school, it's out of district and all of our high school special education costs.
Tuition costs for special ed only. So your special placements is in all of the costs associated with high school special education.
Okay.
It's, so like for Co Brown, there's a difference in tuition between regular tuition and special ed tuition.
Oh, right.
So that special ed tuition gets accounted for in the special placements.
Got it.
And in Concord as well, it accounts for the special ed costs of that tuition portion of Concord.
And the contracted services are at the?
Contracted services are additional things like speech, OT, uh, those kinds of things that, um, would come in addition to tuition.
Got it.
And it also includes out of district placements that are incorporated in that nine to twelve for special placements. So with both.
Got it.
Okay.
See? Glad I asked, 'cause I was wrong.
Um, I would've figured that maybe when we got them. Um, summer placements, you'll see a, a, a large decrease in this, and it's, um, because some of the out of district placements are full year round programs, so it's hard to pull out what is the, um, what is the summer versus what is just their tuition for you to go. So that, those numbers were, were kind of moved over to the special placement line because I wanted to make sure that the numbers were correct, um, and that I wasn't guestimating, um, what what they would consider summer, 'cause they're not, they're not summer placements. Um, for summer program, that's the program that you run in-house. There was a, um, slight increase in that, um, this year, um, or, uh, because of the programming that was put in place, but that's really, um, programming that was preventative programming um, to hopefully prevent, um, the need for out of district placements. Um, contracted services, um, went up slightly, uh, mostly, um, due to the need for additional, um, uh, one-to-one services, um. Yes, and then we also had an increase in our charter schools, um, and we are required to provide special education services to any child that is placed in a charter school, so our charter school numbers did go up and that, um, required an increase in the services that we provide in the, in the charter schools.
Is that, um, increased based on Deerfield kids that go to charter schools?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I um, for all of the um service providers that are shared between districts, what I do is um for the most of them, I'll take what their current caseload is and distribute out their numbers based on that. Um, there are some providers that I use on what is known as the ten-one count, which is um the state um has us take account on October first of who we have in our building and um what the makeup of that is. We in SAU fifty-three take it a little bit further where we um have had a long-running spreadsheet where we um kind of separate where kids are, what kind of programs they're in, if they're in charter schools, out-of-district placements, that type of thing. So um for some providers, I did have to base it off of the ten-one count because their um their movement with their caseload is so fluid that it, that uh um, you know, uh.
Hard to predict what they.
A times, a timestamp today is not going to be what it is tomorrow, so um that that seems like a better avenue for getting their numbers,
Yeah.
but most of them, it's based off their current caseload.
So for your um fund five count, just for example, when we would use like a ten-one count, so part of the SAU budget is fund five, which is our out-of-district coordinator, it's the special um education uh admin assistant, it's the special ed bookkeeper. So in order to calculate their costs, we do it based on a percentage of special ed numbers, which is your ten-one count. So if Deerfield has twenty percent of the special ed numbers in the whole SAU, then you could charge twenty percent in the budget for those employees that are.
And that is committed on your.
On your.
So.
Contracted services.
Yep.
Um, we also uh contract all of our services for um Co-Brown into um, and so those numbers are included.
So yeah, I see there's a pretty big increase in Co-Brown, like a hundred and twenty thousand. Um, is that just because of the patient or the student population or? And that could potentially go up because stu- we don't know which students are gonna go there.
Yeah, right.
Right, so you'll see like there is a decrease in your Concord High number, but there's an increase in your Co-Brown because you're having that shift where it's more of a sixty forty split.
Right. Right.
It seems to be the trend of sixty percent go into Co-Brown, forty percent go into Concord. Um, and so, you know, there's gonna be a decreased number in Concord because this will be, we're budgeting for the third year of the cycle into Co-Brown being optioned. But it will sort of be student-specific of who's.
Yeah, yes.
Students, yeah, once it's all, you'll be, you know.
Yeah. Okay. Absolutely.
Ironed out.
Yep, so both special placements and contracted services will change based on what students allow. Yes, potentially. Cool, sorry.
Yeah, that's right, that was our areas, and and just like I've done in the past, the next round will have, I will let you know exactly what line changed, what the amount was,
Yeah.
um, so that you'll know what changes have occurred.
Right. I just don't want people who are here or listening to get too wetted to these ideas because it's.
Over the next month, it's all.
These are gonna be fine tuning. These are all sort of student-driven matters.
Yep, a hundred percent, yes.
Yeah, and the caveat is, is this is my first time going through this process, I guess it's been really helpful with it,
Yeah.
but there could have been things that I have inadvertently missed.
Sure.
Um.
I told her she only gets one free pass.
We're very tough.
Um, the, in transportation for the school year, the thing to notice is the um the difference in the number of for Co-Brown from year to year. That's where your, that's where your savings really came in, um, by adding that other bus.
It's nice to see an initiative pay off.
Right, we were, we were really guessing.
Right.
You guys banked on it.
Yeah.
And it really paid off, so.
Um, and then um transportation for the summer, um, this um includes out-of-district placements, but we also had an increase in um in transportation needs for um ESY programming, um, because we were doing a lot of um movement.
And your change in your out-of-district transportation numbers is really just based on student programming, so there could have been a change in a student's program, there could have been a change in a school setting for a student who's in out-of-district, and so now their transportation needs might change, so um that that's really dealing to student programming.
Okay, and this is a dumb question, but RSY is regular school year.
Correct.
ESY is extended school year.
You got it.
All questions, stupid questions.
Well, it feels stupid, I've done this too many times, but.
Well, it's alphabet soup. All the acronyms in here, CV, CHS, OOD.
But in order to keep on one page.
And this is.
I like the chart, I will say, I really am into the chart.
So, um, I I told um Dr. Hall that like if there are questions that you guys have around special education, to start with this, and then if you have more questions, we can tailor your questions and and get you the information that you're specifically asking for, or we can do another special ed night like we've done in the past where we spend, you know, an hour and a half on it. So that'll be up to you, but I figured at least you start with this, cuz this is usually the questions that are asked, is around these big-ticket things, um, and then we can go from there.
Yeah, I mean, to me, this is so helpful, I think Jess started really breaking them down between the high schools last year because we used to just sort of get like big numbers, which was not that enlightening to us, I think.
Yeah.
So I think seeing it all broken out and first an extremely large model.
So I appreciate it.
Well, I'm dreaming about numbers.
Come up with tomorrow.
Yeah, oh, I can't imagine, uh, but for us, it's it's incredibly helpful. Um, and for me specifically, when I have to go to NBC, it's very helpful.
Well, it helps paint the story of where your dollars are going, right?
Correct.
So e- e- even though we can't give specific student information, we can tell you what kinds of things we are, you know, your tax dollars are paying for.
I have a question. So I just did the math for the um, under the special placements, the tuition costs uh for Co-Brown from twenty twenty, twenty-five to twenty-six, with nine students, it ended up being about thirty-five thousand a student, but when I did the uh for the next year's twenty-six, twenty-seven, it ended up being about twenty-nine thousand. I don't have the numbers.
Yeah, so you can't really take like an average because it's based on student IPs.
Oh, okay, that's what I was gonna ask.
So, yeah, you can't average out special.
So it's got a. But I thought, but I thought this was just that strict, Co-Brown gets a student, it's an IEP, and they boom, charge a tuition.
Right.
I thought that's what this was, that extra tuition cost, not their needs.
No, so sometimes, so in their placements, so the way that some of these work, so for Concord High um and for Co-Brown, like Co-Brown, when they bill us the tuition, they include like one-to-one paras, shared paras in that tuition rate, they we they bundle bill it to us, so.
Oh, so that's in there as well as the increase in tuition.
So paras, paras would be accounted for Co-Brown in your special placements.
Okay.
Um, contracted services, that would be those additional services like speech, OT, school psych, those kinds of things.
Sure, speech and all that, yeah, okay. Okay, I thought it was just straight tuition, I didn't know paras were included.
So.
There are no. And sometimes there, sometimes there are paras in the contracted services if there's a level of need, like a nursing services or.
Yes, yes.
So those would be in the contracted services.
It's a specialty type.
Sure.
Yes, yeah.
To make it much easier for.
Moving parts. And then for Co- or for Concord, they, the way they bill their special ed tuition program is a little different.
Yeah.
So they have different kinds of special ed programs that they will bill us for. So they will bill us based off of like a life skills program or a transition program or those kinds of things. So it's not as easy as it looks, and so we do all that like student by student billing and accounting for on our end.
Yeah.
And I wish we could show you that, but we can't because it's a tax to student names, and so, and that's how we keep track of those things.
Right. Sure.
Um, but I mean, it might be worth, if there's a way that's easily digestible for us to put it in some kind of document for you, is to include what we've included in special placements versus contracted services to those kids.
Yeah, well, I think with that.
Name that document, tortoise, that's last year you have one.
Yeah, I've seen it before.
Okay.
So, well, I think it's just been, I think there was a lot to it, so it.
Yeah, yeah.
If there's a way that I can have, or maybe Andre has a better way to do this, it's fresh set of eyes, that maybe she can consolidate,
Yeah.
so it's more easily digestible to the community, uh, because when you put too much writing on a page, it just becomes overwhelming.
And like, you could sort of do the math for Co-Brown because we know the amount that they charge for each special ed student.
Yeah. Well, that's why I wasn't sure, but once you tell me you guys include the paras, yeah, that that makes sense because some kids need it, some don't, so.
Yeah.
Well, and remember. And remember, last year, we didn't know where our numbers were gonna be this year.
Yeah.
So the numbers from twenty-five, twenty-six budget were a guesstimate. Because we had no idea how many kids were actually going to be attending Co-Brown that were receiving special ed services. It was all truly a guesstimate, and the same thing with Concord. Your, that tuition for Concord was a best guess on how many kids were gonna be transitioning from Concord to Co-Brown. So that's almost, it's almost a false representation of what we thought might happen this school year for last year's budgeting because we didn't know, we had no idea, but now we have data that we can actually go back and look at and fine-tune our numbers, so.
Right.
And I think we actually have knowing who is, who's going, it's it's still, it's still a guess, yes, so.
But even they are not.
Yeah.
Right, sure. You're still gonna have that guess, right, yeah.
Yes.
Right.
And even though they say they might go now, by the time it rolls around, they may, they may change.
Yeah, they change, they change, yeah.
We've, we had a few changes happen over this summer.
Yeah.
Um, that caused a change in tuition, so.
Any other questions for special education?
No.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Love, love the chart. You are a chart person.
I'm a chart lady. Alright, let's move on to fourteen hundred, which is your um co-curriculars and athletics. Um, I know I believe Miss Withy went over this last time, um, with the changes in the section. It's decreased by fourteen thousand seven thirty-seven. Uh, the reason being is there's been some reductions to some of the teams and activities due to low participation. With that said, when you go to the default, you're gonna see that it will be restored for both salaries and officials, and the reason being is, is while um the district may choose to not run those programs next year, um, they still need to have the option to be able to run them in the future. While we might not be able to have, let's just say, a soccer team, I'm just using that as an example, not that we won't have a soccer team, um, but maybe you don't have enough student participation, you know, looking for next year, but then the following year you may. Uh, so we do need to keep those dollars in there for that reason. Any questions on that?
Uh, just, isn't that something we brought up at the last meeting that we wanted to know about the teams and.
And we did do some fine tuning.
We did, and that um backup paperwork is also in here, the changes that were made.
Okay, yeah. Okay. So there, this is changes since our last meeting.
Correct, that is one area where there was a change.
Yep, okay.
And then default again, that would set it back to.
Right, to the original.
Right back to.
A higher amount.
Sure.
Yep. For the twenty-one hundreds, this is your guidance, counseling, testing, nursing area. This is going up nine thousand eight hundred and forty-one, uh, but really the drivers for this again are the CBA increases. Uh, there is an additional five days added for the nurse, um, and then a requested funding for a new auto meet, audio meter. Uh, we have requested these additional five days for the last, I don't even know how many years,
Every year.
um, but because the district has ended in default, it keeps getting taken out. Um, so it is not a new request, it's just a request that we have to continue to bring forward. Um, so should the budget pass this, for this upcoming year, um, it'll just be part of your roster and there will be a note that I'll have to preference. Um, I, in regards to that, in the default, those additional days do come back in. Okay, so in the summary, those are not included. Uh, and then any supplies that were over in addition um to what was already budgeted in the current fiscal year would not be included either. Any questions on that? Alright, twenty-two hundreds, improvement of instruction, staff development, um, there's an increase of three thousand nine sixty-one. Um, again, this is uh really CBA increases, ongoing professional development and curriculum work. Uh, the default does not include any additional funding requests for quick uh curriculum stipends, uh, but it does restore in-service training and um reduces staff training to the current default budget. So additional funding um for the auto, audio materials was not included. So when I look at the default, I really have to take a look at what was budgeted last year, what we're proposing this year, what would be a continued, uh, considered a one-time expense, or anything new over and beyond what was already budgeted cannot be included. So if they're looking for, you know, anything new, it cannot go in the default, it has to be what's currently already occurred. Any questions on that? For the twenty-three hundreds, this is the school board and SAU services, this is going up sixty-five thousand. Uh, it includes the audit, it also includes actuary services, attorney fees, uh, and then the SAU services, which is part of that district assessment. The district assessment, um, percentage for Deerfield is twenty-one point five. That breakup down is in your budget packet, it is the same one you saw at the full SAU board meeting. Um, the only thing that's different has been finalized since the SAU budget has been um voted and approved. So the increase for Deerfield's portion is fifty-eight thousand. So really, the increase is the majority is um the SAU district assessment.
I have a general question.
Mm-hmm.
So the amount that we pay per district, there's like a formula, right?
Yes.
The assessment, the total assessment of the town versus whatever.
There's the valuation, number of pupils, yeah.
Yeah. So, I don't know if this factors into, like Deerfield just had a new assessment of properties.
Mm-hmm.
Does that mean that we are probably paying a higher amount than others' districts?
Yeah, so if you were to turn to page, uh, it is a one-year lag in regards to this, so it wouldn't get, it is done.
Right, right. Oh, okay. So next year.
It would be next time, um, it is on page thirty. And so you'll notice in the very first column underneath on the left, it's the equalized valuation. You'll see that there has been some changes. Deerfield actually for, has gone down a little bit for their valuation for comparative from twenty-three to twenty-four, um, where some other districts have gone up. Uh, so every year that will change. I always provide both the past and the current, um, that is being utilized. That comes directly from the state of New Hampshire, um, so.
Okay, and that takes in to account like the assess, the property assessments.
Mm-hmm.
So like next year, if we were the only one who got reassessed and our property values went up like a lot, we may be paying a larger valuation.
Potentially, I I mean, that's not the only factor.
Sure.
Pupils is also a factor, so if if um somebody had a ton of students leave their district, um, that would also play a role.
Sure.
So there are a couple factors, but I would say probably the largest change would occur for evaluation.
Got it. And not everyone is being evaluated this year or something.
Oh, yeah, very rarely does that happen. Uh, I mean, just with tra- tax rate settings that just came in, um, they have been coming in. Um, there are some districts that we see, there was one district, their valuation like almost doubled.
Yeah.
Uh, and then there's other districts that were all pretty flat, um, so it really, it's determined on your area. You know, usually there's not an assessment each, it's usually what, three to five years or something, so.
Five years, I mean, we do it five years, and I think Deerfield's average went up sixty-eight percent.
Yeah.
So people.
You're you're probably the one.
So, I just have these, I know it's like a very big pain point in Deerfield right now.
Yes. That's rough.
Right.
That's rough, and I know some of the, you know, times they tried to rotate commercial with residential so that it's not all in one year.
We don't really have that.
But you know, maybe all this, most of our towns don't.
Yeah.
I mean, really, our district towns don't really have a lot of commercial business.
A lot more than us.
Yeah, my colleagues.
Yeah.
Next year.
Yeah. I think pretty much everybody says recently, it's unfortunate, it really is, something that really needs to be regarded. It's not sustainable.
Okay, so just this year, it's not impacted by.
And and your numbers actually have gone down in regards to valuation, but the change, you'll probably see a larger change next year.
Okay.
Um, I did put in here, I brought forth last year in regards to the district school treasurer. I was trying to align all, not, not everybody's the same, but bring them in alignment. We had some treasurers making a thousand, some making four thousand. Um, so last year I requested, I think I brought it up to twenty-five hundred, I think it was. Um, so I'm trying to do that again, because we ended in default, we lost that. Uh, so I was trying to bring that back up, uh, yes, twenty-five hundred. Currently, we pay the district heads or a thousand dollars. Um, it's a, it's a good amount of work, I mean, they're handling our financials. Um, they sign off on the manifest just like this, your school board members do, they do monthly reconciliations. They do monthly reconciliations. Um, this individual also provides a document for the town report. Plus she also, I'm saying she because it is a she right now. Um, this individual also provides a document for the auditors at the end of the fiscal year. So there's a lot of, you know, of work that goes into this. So I hope that, you know, that we can get the support again to increase that. Um, because it is actually the lowest paid treasurer in the city. Again, that amount will not carry over to default though. So if we end in default, we will lose that again. Um, the other piece that will not carry forth to default is the auditing fee, there is an increase in the auditing. It's not because of anything's wrong, it's just the contract is coming to an end. Because the contract is coming to an end, we need to keep status quo. Any questions on any of that? For two, uh, twenty four hundred, that's the district administration. Um, this is going up twenty five thousand three sixty two. This is really due to some of the market adjustments and salary increases that were approved by the board in in the current fiscal year, in the twenty five, twenty six year. Um, so that's really the bulk of it. There is an increase in the software. Uh, we talk about this at the SAU level, um, where we, our IT director for the SAU office bulk shops software and then they bill out to the districts per the utilization for each of the school districts. This is where a area in which that amount lives. It's in the twenty nine, uh, twenty four ninety, four thirty line. Um, so we only bill out what the utilization is for each of the districts. But it does help us to capture savings, um, rather than each school district going out and shopping themselves. There has been a reduction in coursework to align with the actual needs. For next year, the default does not include increases for the principal, assistant principal, secretaries, tech coordinator. Those will remain the same, again, because they're not covered by a CBA. The course reimbursement and travel will restore back um to what it should be. Either what has been budgeted or what is actually in the contract. Um, and the default will not uh allow for additional funding for commencement that has been added. Any questions on that? All right, twenty six hundred, this is your facilities, your operation and maintenance. There's an increase of forty two thousand. Um, really, the driver, the, one of the biggest drivers is liability insurance has increased substantially. Um, why that is, I'm not sure. Over the last few years, I've seen it incrementally go up. Um, but I would say the majority of our districts, other than one, um, went up a substantial amount. One of my districts went up like forty two thousand dollars. Uh, we're not seeing that here, Deerfield um as drastically, but uh the rates have gone up just like every other insurance rates. Um, it also does, um, just like your health insurance does, is based off of your district's utilization. Uh, in this section, there also are funding for, uh, to purchase a scrubber burnisher. Uh, it's the routine upkeep of landscaping and the, and upkeep of your building. Your service contracts are in this section. Again, the one additional FTE for the night custodian has been added. Um, and then there'll also be the reduction of the modular, which is on line one thirty three. This is the area where you're gonna see that reduction, which is, I believe, around thirty two thousand. For the default, it will not include any salary increases for the custodians and it also eliminates the one FTE that's being requested. And then there are some maintenance supplies um that have been reduced to meet the current voted default amount. Any questions on that? All right, twenty seven hundred, this is your transportation. Transportation's going down a hundred and sixteen thousand. Uh, we've, as I mentioned already, uh, we are estimating a higher rate for regular ed transportation because we are still waiting those proposals to come in. We've included thirty five thousand for McKinvento. Um, and then we've seen over a hundred thousand dollar decrease in special education transportation. Um, because again, we are able to utilize that Co Brown bus that is able to really uh capitalize on, on some of those savings. It includes seven elementary and three high school buses.
Um. So the transportation, so I am, so we're gonna have a lot more students at Co Brown next year, potentially. And I'm not sure that everyone can fit on one bus. It'll be a, we need to consider. How are we factoring that into transportation costs?
I have not, I have not.
Okay.
Because I didn't, I have no, I did not know that there was any other line of thinking.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Um, so I mean, we could, uh, if you wanted any, from one bus, elementary bus up, I'm not sure.
Don't we already have, we have seven elementary and three high school, right?
Uh-huh, budgeted.
Budgeted.
Uh-huh.
It's not gonna change for the budget, it's just that we can't get the bus drivers who need.
Uh, the high school rate is slightly different.
Well, and I'm just wondering if we have more students at Co Brown, if we're going to be able to have the same amount of savings for special ed transportation if we can't fit all the kids on the bus.
Well, we may want, we may wanna do a look when we get more solid numbers of where kids are thinking of going.
Okay.
Um, we may wanna look at whether sending two buses to Concord is still a necessity.
Right.
Or we shift two buses to Co Brown and have one go to Concord. Like, we'll have to look at that when we get more final numbers in.
Yeah.
I I don't think we're ready to do that yet.
Yeah, no, no. I just, I wasn't sure.
But, yeah, we'll have to.
We'll have that back again because I'm not sure we can get all the kids.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I have that on the back of my mind, so.
Yeah.
Like, a little. So let it by, all right, can I question?
But for now, it's status quo of what we're doing today.
Got it, okay.
Um, the negative effect on this is that the contract has come to an end as of June thirtieth of this year. Um, the reason why I mention that is when it comes to the default, any additional cost in change in contract will not carry forth. So.
For the new contract.
Mm-hmm, for the new contract. So let it's, let's just, you know, say that the old one was five hundred thousand and the new one, seven hundred thousand, two hundred thousand would not be included. I'm just, that is not your numbers, but just saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So that does play a negative effect in regards to that, so.
But that's not the case for special ed transportation.
Special ed transportation is, that is base, um, we have to base that on the, that is required by law that we.
And we also have contracts.
And we have contract that's still in the law, that's still in the law.
But I wanna be clear that if we end up in default, we don't default back to what was in special education for this year. You know how we have that money that we saved in special ed?
Mm-hmm.
That we're utilizing to pay for this bus?
Yes.
We wouldn't have that savings for next year.
Right, right.
Because you wouldn't default back to a special ed that doesn't have a need for the following year.
Correct, associated.
So because we currently don't have a need for that, because those students are receiving regular transportation, that would no longer be budgeted for, for next year. And so there would not, it would not default back into special, so you wouldn't have a surplus in special ed transportation.
So. Okay.
To buffer transportation contracts.
So let's say.
That's correct.
We don't get the budget approved and we're several hundred thousand dollars short on transportation. We may have to reassess high school transportation in general.
Yes.
Correct, yeah.
Correct. That is correct.
Yes, or have a special public meeting to raise funds to pay for it.
Yes.
Whoa.
All right, yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
Hopefully, the difference won't be dramatic.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but I did wanna point out that there, you know, that is something that will hit the default differently than it has in the past, and that's because we have been in a multi-year contract for many years.
And because you had special ed transportation and that covered the cost this year, so it wouldn't cover it next year in default.
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Got it.
Because we're not gonna budget for a potential for failure when that's not the current student need.
Right.
Well, I mean, you can have, look at, special ed is a one-time expense in a way, right?
Because we can add your budget.
It's, it's only based on what's happening at that time, period of time. So the, uh, what does stay in the default is the McKinvento because that is required by law. Uh, but then, I mean, the same number buses will remain, uh, but it would just be the difference in contractual cost.
Okay, another question. So we are required to provide busing K through eight, does it not carry over into the default for that reason?
It does not, uh, unfortunately, uh, that is one of the arguments that has been made in regards to conversations surrounding default budgets.
Yeah.
I could argue both ways.
Right.
Our attorney could argue both ways. Um, so we have, you know, because we are in a multi-year contract, we would carry it forth year to year. Um, but now that we're not, I have a harder argument right now.
Got it, okay.
But you are not wrong, K through eight is required by law. So.
The two-mile radius.
Two miles.
Yeah, outside, outside of.
Yeah, no, but, well.
Is any, can anybody walk to school and get home, probably not.
Uh.
No, it's not safe, but.
I didn't say safe, I.
Not safely, but that is.
Nor would we ever want them to.
Exactly.
Oh, I made my kid do it once. Once. Well, he wouldn't wake up. And I finally had it, I said, if you don't wake up, I'm outta here, and if you don't show up at school, you are in big trouble. Walk up, you go, oh, and he walked, it's, it's only six miles.
Oh, jeez.
He never did it again.
Never did it again.
I bet he was tired.
Oh, yeah, I bet he got here and I bet or something.
Been sweaty, probably.
Probably go to jail, no? No, good for you.
All right, any other questions on transportation? All right, twenty nine hundred, this is your benefits section. Um, we're increasing a hundred and sixty one thousand. This does include your health benefits and your estimated increase of fifteen thousand, as well as your dental insurance for five, uh, not five thousand, five percent. Uh, this does not include benefits for any added FTEs or ALs. So we added five additional days, those benefits are not included, meaning the fringe benefits, the FICA retirement. Any added FTEs, again, those benefits are not attributed into the default. Any questions on that?
This could change.
But we don't, but we don't have it.
What's that?
This will change.
This will, this section will change because we do not have a rate from our health insurance yet. So you will a hundred percent, I hope a hundred percent.
Just a hundred percent.
Anyway, I hope my estimation is not correct for once in my life.
Right.
Yeah.
So when you said it doesn't include benefits for added FTEs, the only things we're talking about is a paraprofessional and the five days for the nurse.
Um, the, and um, no, we, we actually reduce the paraprofessional, the custodian and the five additional days.
My custodian.
Those two things are what it is.
Okay, all right.
And again, special ed wouldn't default to the positive because it's based on student need.
Correct.
So you wouldn't have a spare para because you no longer need that based on ID.
Right. Yeah, that's just based on needs, okay.
Just like we can't cut a para if it's a need.
Right.
So it really goes both ways.
Yeah.
All right, um, the next section is, um, five fifty two twenty one, which is your food service. We're decreasing that by seven thousand six six sixty nine. This, um, covers any unanticipated cost that the, um, food service budget program can't cover. Most of the time, well, I shouldn't say most time, um, over the last couple of years, it's really been covering mostly any uncollected debt. Um, Deerfield and a couple other districts within our SAU have had some surplus in their fund balance that has been able to cover some of the shortfalls. Um, that is gonna at some point come to an end, um, you know. A lot of the surplus that has remained, it has really come from the years of COVID because we received additional funding during that time, um, but that is starting to dwindle. So, um, we won't be able to offset that budget, you know, as much as we have been over the last few years. The next section is your fifty two fifty one, fifty two fifty two. This again is your, um, capital reserves and expendable trust, those will come late later. And then your fifty four hundred and your fifty four oh one, this is your total grant and your total cost of your food service program. These are amounts that are outside of fund one, outside of your operating, but we have to include it in your total operating cost. So they are the last two lines in your budget, um, that have been included so that it will go on total appropriation.
But these will be offset by.
These are one hundred percent offset by revenue. So if I say that we are budgeting five hundred thousand dollars for grants, um, but we only bring in four hundred and fifty thousand, we only spend four hundred and fifty thousand, it nets to zero. Same thing with the food service program, if you say the food service program's gonna cost five hundred thousand, um, the revenue comes in, it, it has to net zero. The difference in that one is, is you're gonna see that one in the section above in that fifty two twenty one. If there's a shortfall, your operating budget has to cover it. Whereas the grants, it doesn't because it nets to zero.
And the revenue for food services, grants and lunch money?
Um, it, no, not grants, it's state, state, federal funded.
Okay.
So non-SOE.
Got it.
And, and then the lunch, regular lunch program, um, cost that we, that we, should be to the students, if the parents pay. And then some districts do catering, so they receive some not like non-program revenue, things like that, meaning they, like, for instance,
Not that good.
Not that good, but like, for instance, we have one district that makes cookies for the holidays, they sell them, they send it out to the SAU, people order them. It brings them in, non-program revenue.
Really good cookies.
They're very, they're like melt-in-your-mouth, like.
I've, I've never been offered to buy them, I would.
You would love them. They're like, go with some like raspberry, I mean, I mean, they're amazing. Probably shouldn't talk about food, probably none of us have eaten. Um, all right, so that's all I have in regards to summers. On the very back, on the very back page, in the last next two pages, I've included some charts. Some of these charts you've seen, I did them last year. Um, so really focusing on what the budget drivers are, um, what areas are causing increases or decreases. And then on the very bottom of page six, I've broken out what each individual program is costing and what percentage of that budget is attributed to that, as well as what the change is per program and what the percentage is attributed to the change. And then on the very back, I also, which I haven't done this in the past, but I thought, um, because, um, we have seen, we've been able to capture some savings within the operating budget this year, I really wanted to focus on some of those. Um, so I put together a chart that shows the areas that we've captured some savings. So special placements and summer services, about a hundred thousand dollars of savings for this that were looking this year. Special education transportation's down two hundred and twenty two thousand. Co-curriculars with, uh, program alignments for what they believe they're gonna need for next year. Uh, there's a savings of almost sixteen thousand, a little more than sixteen thousand. The modular is savings of thirty two thousand. And then food service transfer, um, seventy six hundred. And then I put in here the capital and expendable trust, that's really not a savings, but because it is a decrease in the budget, I wanted to put it in here just to kinda put it out in the front to remind you that while it looks like a savings, it's really, potentially will not be, unless you don't have any one of those. Any questions? I know that's a lot to absorb, a lot of information. I welcome feedback on this method comparative to one of them in the past too, or if there's something else you would prefer to see.
You know, for this chart.
Which one?
Um, the budget drivers.
Yeah.
I would love to see like staff, um, salaries and benefits separately, instead of being lumped into building operations and overheads.
Sure.
Because I think, I mean, that, it might be the majority of this.
It will be, yeah.
Yeah, but I think that makes it slightly more clear that, because to me, it sort of seems like we're increasing the budget for the building.
We're doing a lot of, we're doing a lot of building, yeah.
And we're really not.
Right.
I, I agree with that, I agree with that, so I certainly can break that up.
Yeah.
It, it is a little deceiving in nature looking at it. I don't want your community to think that we're putting half a million dollars into your building.
Exactly, yes, correct.
Yeah, yes, yes.
Uh.
Well, we would love to do so.
Right, correct, I would love that. Um, but yeah, just, yeah.
Sure, absolutely, thank you for that.
Amber, where in the, um, in the budget, yeah, where would I find the charge, um, that we pay the SAU?
So that's on page thirty. That's the district assessment, that's that page we.
Oh, it's here, okay, but.
Yeah, so.
But there is a line in the budget.
Well, that's.
Oh, in the budget, you mean?
That's what I was looking for.
It's the twenty three hundred line.
Yeah, I didn't, I couldn't.
Um, so it should be, um, it will be on page. Um, so it should be, um, it will be on page, uh, page fourteen, at the very last line on page fourteen.
Oh, district share, you know, I was looking and looking and looking, I couldn't find it, and there it is, boom. Okay, thanks.
Hey, no problem. It's like I said.
Just wanted to feel stupid, that's all.
This is a lot of information and a lot of lines. One of the reasons why I kind of steered away from, you know, listing out lines and increases, I just feel like it's really overwhelming. Even given the presentation of, of listing the lines in the budgets, I just felt like even for myself, it was a lot.
Well, this gives, usually gives you what you're looking for because you wanna know what the bottom line is for each of the, the areas, the account goals.
Yeah, I mean, to me, the actual budget lines are fairly self-explanatory. If you're looking for specific costs that's within here, you can figure it out, but I think the overview is very helpful.
Well, and I also, I looked at it from a different perspective, I looked at it in a perspective, I'm a community member.
Yes.
Like, we, you know, live and breathe this every day, right, or, I know I do.
Well, yeah.
And, and all of you have become it, you know.
It becomes, I memorize nearly the stuff.
Right, but to somebody that doesn't, it's like foreign language to some of ours. So I thought, let's capture more of a summarize each of these so that they can understand the lie and not just look at all these numbers that are just floating on a page.
Yep, I compared it to Candy's earlier.
Yeah, it's learnable.
It's, it's, right.
But it takes some time and dedication.
Right, and my hope is that somebody can pick up this and say, I got an understanding of what's in here.
Right.
Whereas I feel like if they pick up this, unless they've been part of the discussion
Yeah, right.
or have listened to the discussion, all they're seeing is plus and minuses. Not the, not the lie.
And is this, is this packet published along with this?
This will, Lexi's gonna re-publish this tomorrow because it, um, came in at a later time. So this will go out, it's not already out in the published driver, it'll go out tomorrow with any other supplemental periods here.
Yeah, I did.
Like the special ed sheet, this will go out.
I had several budgets this week, so it took me, this process took me a lot longer than my typical one, which I'm fine with, because I, I feel like this is more helpful, um, but that's why it came in a little bit.
That's fine, um.
If we've been trying to keep up with anything we do additional, we do an addendum packet the next day, I mean, if it goes out.
Yeah. And I emailed just about this earlier, but we typically have all the budget stuff in a separate folder on the SAU website.
Yep, I had to update it today.
Yes. So that would, that, if you're looking for this and this, it should be in the packet and also in the budget and financial folder.
Yep, um, Lexi will have that, all of the districts updated that we have for tomorrow, including that, I think. Thank you for putting that.
It's where I find stuff.
Well, that's funny, because I, I would, I don't ever look at that, because I'm not, that's not where I find my materials.
Yeah. Right.
So it's hopeful, if there is something missing that you're used to seeing, to say something.
Yeah.
So the next version that you get, um, will be in the format that you're used to seeing in previous years, where I'll list the line number and the changes that occurred, so that you know where now the budget has changed.
Okay. Um, does anyone have anything they wanna discuss tonight? I personally plan to go through this whole thing with a fine tooth comb in the next, you know, in the two weeks between these meetings. Um, but if anyone wants to chat about it, I think now is where we can. Um, any other questions? Say you should ask them now, because we have the experts here tonight.
And even if you have some later, you can email Kendra, and then Kendra will email Jess. And Jess will let me know.
You can email me, yeah.
You can email.
She will get to me and I will get you, and answer, or Kendra will get you and answer to your question.
Yep.
Certainly, do not hold back, it's, we, we really, there, there's never such a thing as too many questions. I want you to understand the why, the why is super important. Um, so please, if you ask, I'd rather somebody be informed than to just.
Yes. Okay, anything else, do you guys have anything for tonight, for the question?
No. Hold on.
Yeah, that's what happens, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you both so much.
We were reading numbers tonight.
I read numbers, different fiscal years.
Uh, thank you both so much, this is very helpful.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We can get props, thanks.
No, it's a good idea.
Well, I know it's an extraordinary amount of work to do the, to do the charts and the explanatory things aside from, of course, just creating the budget. Uh, so I appreciate the time that you're spending.
Yeah, no, no problem, like, you know, like I said, each year I try to make it a little bit hopefully better.
We jazz it up.
We try to jazz it up inside as much information.
Well, we try to learn based on last year's experiences, so if, if the community was asking specific questions, if you guys were asking specific questions, we try to make sure to include that, so we're taking that feedback and, and doing better every time, so.
And you're asking, there are some documents that are in here, um, like your tax impact's not in here yet, and your revenue, estimated revenue is not in here yet. Uh, the reason being is, I can't do the tax impact without the estimated revenue, and I can't complete the estimated revenue because we have not received adequacy aid, no first for next year. So, we usually receive that at the beginning of November, so we should be receiving that any day now, um, for finalize or their draft for the budget session anyway. Um, once I get that, so I should have that in the documents for your next meeting. Um, so I'll also have a tax impact at that same time, um, as well. And then I think what I will also do is I will also drop in that packet, that adequacy aid breakdown that I did, that was a little bit different, um, because I feel like it's informational. Um, it would be for the current adequacy aid, not next time, because I don't think I'll have time to gear it towards the estimated revenue, but I do wanna remind you of the changes that happened in the last, or the current budget session, um, because those could happen again in the next. But I won't have enough information to really create the same chart, because I won't have that second part until next fall.
Got it.
Awesome, thank you so much, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Are they good to go? You guys are dismissed.
You're welcome to sit.
Thank you.
But don't.
I don't, sorry.
Um, okay, do we wanna tackle any of these things quickly? I think we could tackle goal quickly.
Probably tackle some of them.
Book, school board goals quickly, just to get it off the agenda. So, um, I know Missy and, um, Dan's were not here the last week, and we did review the draft goals, and then we added a little more. Um, this looks a little bit startling, there's a lot of goals on here, but we added, um, let me see, we added two C and D, and then I changed three B.
Wait, did you say three B or three D?
Three B.
They're not three D. I have D and D.
Well, oh, so you got the new ones, those are the old ones.
Uh, I've been in a couple.
Oh, yeah. Mike, there we go. It changed it. So I don't know if anyone has additional thoughts, or if we wanna approve them.
I will approve.
I have twenty twenty six goals.
For the school board?
For the school.
I will second. Any discussion?
I mean, basically, we were trying to add in, um, evaluations superintendent, and Ken wanted the fiscally responsible transparent budget, which obviously we all agree with.
Yeah, that was on there, the only thing that I added to that was.
Oh, to try and get it voted.
To get, right, yeah, earn the confidence and approval of voters.
To try and. Right, to basically try to get it voted in.
Yeah.
I don't know.
And then the, the strategic plan, which was an idea that came through from the NHSBA representative who was here,
It's a strategical.
Yeah.
encouraged us to create a strategic plan. Um, but otherwise, any other discussion?
I do, I don't know if we, I talked about it, but one of the things they also mentioned when I went to the school board association, was about creating norms.
What do you mean?
Oh, and I know that we used to do that, um, when I was here, and we had our, um, critical friends groups, we always created norms, so there were things like, um, you know, agree to be present, to listen. I mean, I go, I can go over that later, that's written out, but I thought, I don't know if we wanna make that a goal, or is that something we wanna talk about, but.
We, we couldn't add it to an agenda, I don't know if it needs to be a goal, but.
Because they, they did things, well, it's really nice, because some school boards had, like, they narrowed it down to three, and they had them on their agenda.
Oh.
And, or, and then some of them just stated them at the beginning of every meeting, just to remind people.
Usually if you have norms, you do it at every meeting, you remind people of the norms before you proceed.
Right. So like, some of the things they said were, um, like, work together and be collaborative, assume good intentions, that's always a good one, instead of thinking somebody's trying to do something bad. Be present and prepared for the meeting, challenge the issue, not the person, be respectful, uh, resolve the issues in the meeting, not the parking lot, have fun. Those are just, those are, I, I, I.
Have fun. We, that, we would need to change things.
I, I actually, I actually, I actually said, um, we actually got kind of, you know, a complaint, because we've had too much fun in our meetings.
True, true, I love it, we were not being professional.
But, but I said, but we don't really agree with that, so, um. But anyway, those were some of the things, but one of the things they suggested is that you could have a summer retreat, and then, or do it after the board changes too,
Mm-hmm.
and have a retreat and just like kind of hash that out, and then they mentioned too that, um, like this, the SAU might also have norms that they use at their meetings, just to try to then merge and make sure that same, I don't, I don't know. But okay, but I just, I'm throwing that out there, but we don't need to make it a goal, because we're obviously not.
I think we should, yeah, no, I think it's a good idea, and I don't, I think it's, I think it would be awesome to put it on the agenda. I think we could probably resolve it in a, in a meeting.
Okay, well, I think it was a wonderful idea, so that's why I put all that down there.
Yeah, yeah. Can we make a note?
I made a note.
Okay.
All right, so I did make a motion, it was seconded.
Yes.
All right.
Uh, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the twenty five, twenty six school board goals?
Aye.
I know. Or zero? Do we wanna do your goals, or?
Sure.
Yep. So I added those to the drive, um, I did go through after being able to digest it with you guys and the Pembro report as well, um, and amended some of the language in my goal, just to make it more clear. And I also took your feedback, Ellen, in regards to the climate data, um, trends for initiatives to improve climate in school building. And then there was one other thing, you would ask me to touch it up in here, maybe, maybe another audits.
Yes.
So I did take that feedback and added those as objectives on your goal number four, resource management, that fell into that kind of fiscal and personnel resources within the districts.
I think we also wanted to make sure that the staff are aware of this, these basic policies and have that in hand.
Oh, that's what it was, yeah, yep, I did add that in. Yep.
Okay. Any other comments about superintendent goals? We all have a lot of goals ahead of us, it seems. The end of the line. Um, all right, I'll make a motion to approve the superintendent goals.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Missy?
Yep.
Um. Nope. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I am gonna push the delegate review, if that's okay with you.
Yeah.
Okay, I will list in the next meeting. Unless there's anything pressing, um, I think for board reports, we will just do the principals report, unless anyone else is dying to.
I just wanted to mention one thing in CRB, if you want, and I just wanted to mention that, um, we had a great meeting, I, I asked a ton of questions because I had the budget in mind. And, um, I just, I know that one of the things that we, we've kind of talked about every once in a while, or maybe I've been concerned too, is about the amount of, um, uh, technology subscriptions that we have. But I have to say, a lot of that came up at the meeting, and I even saw some examples and stuff afterwards, and how it's being used, and I was, I really was happy with what I heard, and I, it became very clear to me that they're used quite a bit, and that they're, um, a real good, um.
Resource?
Resource for the, for the teachers, yeah.
And which curriculum are?
Well, this would have been math, literacy, and science.
Uh-huh.
And they even mentioned, a lot of teachers mentioned the, um, Excel for social studies is great too, I didn't see that one, I didn't see the signs. So I was, I was very impressed, but that was just, I just, I wanted to just bring that up because of the budget, because I always kind of look at that, and I'm like, do we really need that, do we really need all that stuff?
Yeah.
And part of it is probably because I didn't use it, I wasn't here when they were using it, but having seen it, and like, Kira showed me the science stuff, I was like, oh, yeah, that's cool. So, um, I thought it was really good and worthwhile, so, I just wanted to make that comment.
Did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to touch base on the, there's been discussion around the average piece salary, and I felt like it was, felt pushed into the budget, and I just wanted to make sure that, um, I know Ellen and I were going back and forth around the teacher salary things, because the data that was presented for the state numbers last year is wrong.
Yeah, it didn't.
Um, and I don't know.
I did the math and I knew it was, it was wrong.
Did you find out why? I was gonna do the math, and then I thought, oh, I just use the state website.
So, yes. Yes, and, um, to be honest, it was an error on our end of who, the person inputting the data, um, misread the directions from the Department of Ed,
Ah.
and included things that they weren't necessarily supposed to put in there.
That's why the whole SAU is wrong.
Correct.
Okay.
So the whole entire SAU is wrong, because the person that did the numbers last year inputted them incorrectly.
Okay.
And unfortunately, nobody caught that error, until it was too late and we passed the window where we can make corrections. Um, so I have met with my admin assistant, um, a couple of times now, to make sure that we are doing it correctly. Um, I went through and verified them twice. Um, she's gone through to verify, we had, um, HR double check things. Um, so we, we have, we are confident in the numbers we're putting forward this year, to be accurate, and they are way more in line to the trend, um, so, you know.
But that's great to know, because I mean, we had a public comment where someone came and said, yeah, they're way above the state average, and I'm like, I don't think so, you know?
Yeah. Yes. Yes. Which, which from the data presented, yes.
Right, but then when I looked at the state, I was like, whoa, what happened?
From the data that I liked, that is correct, but it's wrong. The data is wrong.
So it's really good to know, all right, great, thank you for doing that, I think that's a lot of work.
Yes, and we did put in a petition with, from the, to the Department of Ed to see if we could go back and correct them, but they said no, because that, there was a window to correct those, and we didn't get it in by the.
So it'll be this big drop the next year, that's all, yeah, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Guess they got a lot of merit increases that year.
Okay, so this will be in the updated agenda packet, if people wanted to see it?
I wish.
Or is it in the budget packet?
It's not in the budget packet, I, I mean, not the budget packet, in the, um.
I think it's just good information if people come and say, hey, we see that Deerfield, because it had, it was like eighty two thousand with the federal salary.
Yes. Yep. Yeah, right. Which is not, and.
Right, I looked at the roster, and I was like, there's like two teachers made on that.
It's not right there.
Right. Right, so I think that, that, and maybe that'll even come up when you do the budget and the budget committee,
Further.
but you, but you'll have this information, so.
Yeah, so I will, yes, I'm gonna have, um, Lexi add this to the addendum packet tomorrow.
Yes, I'm ready.
Um, and I also expanded on the school districts to cover like our, more of our encasement area, because I know you had a couple on there,
Yeah.
so I, I expanded it to put just a couple more in there that are close proximity of our SAU, so.
Yeah.
Um, just so people could see.
Yeah, cool.
So.
Great.
All right.
So will we do the rest of the reports the next meeting?
Yeah, unless there's something really vital that we need to know about tonight, I would say.
Were you gonna have Ms. Whitty?
Yes.
Touch on this. I would like to do a principal's report.
No, it was just, as executive board, when we moved the budget forward, and the only thing that we changed that I can remember correctly, because, was that Amber did put in, or we had to vote to increase, um, the percentage for insurance.
Health insurance.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And the reason I bring that up is because there was a comment that was made online, that Kendra and I had increased the SAU budget more. And so I want a clarification that we did not increase the budget more because we wanted to add more things.
Yes.
It was that, um, Amber did not have the percentage rates for insurance.
Kind of do, yeah.
Because they're maybe high, yeah.
Right, so that was why we decided to.
Right. It was a better estimation than it will be twelve to fifteen percent.
Yes.
Right.
We increased it to twelve percent.
So it wasn't that we decided to add a lot more to the budget, which is how I read the comment, because nothing was mentioned.
I, we, I also did make a motion, which might be confusing to people, to decrease the amount of reserves that were being used to offset the bottom line of the SAU budget.
Mm-hmm.
So. So. We, we, there was like assessment from school care that we have to pay for for our districts, but also for the SAU. And in order to pay for it, we were using reserves, which are generally designated for particular categories. Um so those were all reduced, I think most were reduced um in the amount that we were reserving.
Yep.
And my intention was to not use any money to offset the bottom line of the budget and to reserve all of our reserved funds. That weren't being used for school care in case there are unexpected costs. So we could spend twenty five thousand dollars to decrease the bottom line of the Fund One budget. Or we could keep that in case health insurance is, goes up by fifteen percent instead of twelve percent or whatever. So. If anyone is confused about that, I'm happy to explain. Okay.
Alright.
Principals report.
Thank you, um this covers October second through November Tuesday fifth.
Yes.
But sixth, but um so our fall sports update, our fall sports teams had a great season, cross country completed, uh competed strongly throughout the season. While the volleyball team wrapped up their successful season narrowly, I'm sorry, I would mess up that word, I shouldn't, I kept trying to sound like narrow. Narrow, can I have a little more narrowing please?
She said it.
Miss, I see, I don't think about it, missing the playoffs by just one game, but we were honored to host the JV playoffs um here at Deerfield Community School.
Yeah.
So many thanks to all who made that possible and all the coaches that have been involved in all of these fall sports. Our soccer team, the boys finished uh the season with a few solid wins.
Wahoo!
Uh-huh, I think there were four, I think Mr. Reese said there were four, which is nice.
Four. More and more than last year.
Yes, exactly, exactly. When they ever told me that they won and I, that it was their first game that they won, I'm like, this season though, they're like, no, forever. Uh but the girls, um and coaches, congratulations to both of them, that team advanced to the championship game against Co Brown. Uh they did come up short, but we are so proud of them for getting that far. On Wednesday, October eighth, Mrs. Chase and Miss Pim, our two art teachers, attended the Arts Bridges meeting at CBNA. So Co Brown, um every, I think pretty much every month or every other month, something like that, has Bridges meeting. So uh sending towns of eighth grade teachers go to Co Brown and meet with the English department and the art department and the math department and the science department. Just to see what kinds of things we're, they're doing there that maybe we're falling short on here, um they can they can be are able to highlight the things that we're sending our kids uh to Co Brown with. Um so that's an exciting opportunity for our teachers to go and meet with some of the Co Brown teachers uh in their field of study. On Friday, October tenth, we had our professional day for all staff, so certified and non-certified staff were in the building. We began the day with a session on building a culture of reading here at Deerfield Community School and what that looks like. Grade span breakouts, reviewed and discussed universal literacy in uh instructional practices at the tier one level. Uh after regrouping as a staff to share key takeaways, teachers participated in targeted work sessions. Um they also had team time, the science curriculum committee met. Um individually, some teachers, the K to four teachers met with our math specialists who do math empowered. And our math, our um fifth through eighth grade math teachers met with um our um other math specialists to talk about math accommodations and work on things um in the, of that nature. Our parent educators uh stayed with us first thing in the morning, but then had the opportunity to meet with um our middle school case manager Gabby Drown for a day in the life simulation. Which was designed to help staff experience what it might feel like to have an educational disability. Uh she did all kinds of activities, did Danielle do that as well?
I did together.
It was both of them, so I, so I'll I'll add her name to this um so that she also gets credit. Uh Danielle Morris was also involved with that. Um we enjoyed a delicious croctoberfast pot lucklitch and ended the afternoon viewing the signs of suicide, which uh is initial SOS, which was provided by Connors Klein. Uh so our staff um that, where they were comfortable, if they wanted to watch it by themselves, they could, if they wanted to watch it with their team, they could, if they wanted to just watch it with a partner. Um but we spent the afternoon um watching that and that's just looking for signs of suicide and preventative measures as well. Um it was a hard day, there were some people that um this was highly affects them, so we tried to be very sensitive about that. A big thank you to Nurse Bonnie for organizing the flu staff, uh the flu shot clinic. Uh we ended up having to use Raymond Haniford, we had been going with uh Rite Aid, but there's no more Rite Aids in the, in the, that are gone. So Raymond Haniford technicians were here and about forty three staff members participated in getting their flu shots. Um on Wednesday, October fifteenth, we had a SAU leadership at Epsom. And Thursday, our fourth graders went on a field trip to Strawberry Bank. Monday, October twentieth, um Ellen had mentioned we had our curriculum review board, we can um uh we'll report out on that the next time on the, as on the agenda. Tuesday, October twenty first, Chris Kufos installed our second AED, so the defibrillator machines. So we have one right by the entrance when you walk in the main door. Um and uh he installed another one down by the cafeteria as you go out those caf doors to to the cafeterias in the back of the building as well, which is, uh both are really close to the gym too. Um DCS would like to thank the Roberts family and Focus for their generous solutions towards this purchase of a second AED. Um and um it was installed on the Roberts property, so they remember those words.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, so and and uh Ernie ironically was there the next day and for a fire journal.
Yeah.
And so we made sure that he was aware that we remembered Rose, I didn't know Rose, but I know her story, so. Um on Tuesday, our eighth graders tour are toured Concord High School and Hebron Academy. Um they, uh their high school choice finals, I had mentioned earlier, are due on Friday, November fourteenth. Deerfield Family Night will be held at both Concord High School and PA in the upcoming weeks. Um our students are actually tonight, they were invited to tour Concord High School, meet administration, and PA is going to, um as Headmaster Hamilton mentioned. Um next Monday, November tenth, they are invited to come and tour and meet uh some of the staff members over there. Co Brown is hosting their own group tours through November fifth, which was, I think today was the last one. Tuesday, our assistant fire chief Dubianski visited our kindergarteners for fire safety month, brought a fire truck and everything, it was an exciting afternoon for them. Wednesday, October twenty second, uh thank you to the Lions Club, they conducted the kids site screenings at DCS, the first time we've done this. Uh they come in with a machine, there are a couple of members of the Lions Club and they take a picture of the kids and um there were about two hundred and twenty students participated. Which was for them the largest group of participation and it was, uh because it was our first time, um it was a good turnout, we, it was an opt-in program. So parent, parents and guardians have to actually send the permission form back for them to be able to have this done and about eleven students were referred to complete A. Um they had gotten a message in, uh sent home that they should have a complete eye exam. Um so that was very helpful to have them in and they're looking forward to coming back next year.
Is that different from the screening that Nurse Bonnie does?
So Nurse Bonnie is do, yeah, she's doing with Avery, but it is different.
Oh.
You get different, um it, I don't know if there's much different information, but the Lions Club is a very thorough.
That's true.
And Nurse Bonnie does um more of the hearing, um and if students didn't get the vision, then they, from Lions Club, then they get the vision from her. Um later that day, October twenty second, I met with Lucinda Barone, I apologize for saying her name incorrectly. I, I, um Lucinda is uh from the Deerfield Historic Society, so she came over and took possession of the time capsule. Uh so I have a note here from her, she um has inventoried all of the items that were in the uh it's, uh it was very fa, it was fascinating when I was going through it. So everything has been inventoried, she has it at the Historical Society, there is a couple of um things going on right now at the Historical Society. So she thinks probably early spring, she will um develop the um time capsule over there. So um I have a couple of flyers, if you're interested, um it seems like she's, she was thrilled to take uh over the the time capsule and so spread the word too. Cause several people have reached out and they're like, well, we'd like to have, well, there's a letter in there, can I take it? So it's all gonna be, going to be over there. Um on Friday, October twenty fourth, our fourth graders took a field trip to Squam Lake. And then our newly elected Deerfield House of Representatives, if you remember correctly, Mr. McKay brought a few of them um to a school meeting last year. So congratulations, we have um some three sixth graders, three seventh graders and three eighth graders with their names uh right there. Sophia, Sam and Annette in sixth grades, Dora, Emma and Nora in seventh grade and Elizabeth, Annie and Paige in eighth grade are our Deerfield House of Representatives.
Sam a boy or a girl?
Uh Sam, uh oh boy, thank you.
Sixth grade. He's the only boy. So it's a very female.
Yeah, for us, right, having leaders, having group girl leadership.
I love it. Yeah. Yes, love it.
Yeah, 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 um that's a good question, I didn't even notice that, Ellen, thanks for pointing that out. Uh Tuesday, October twenty eighth, our third graders took a field trip to Great Bay. And Wednesday, October twenty ninth, a big thank you to our students, staff, PTO, community members and everyone who donated um or volunteered to make um it a success. Um. I know, just looking at them like, what was that, I think thank you, what was Wednesday, October twenty eighth, oh, Fun Run.
Oh, Fun Run.
Oh, Fun Run. Cheapers, creepers, sorry about that, I'll fix that as well. Um and um last week, uh we had our parent teacher conferences, PD Wednesday, yesterday, yep, yep.
Yes, you're there.
Our last week, our teachers were given some time to prep for that, I always try to give them time um on PD Wednesday to prep for parent teacher conferences, we have report cards coming up. So they'll have some team time to be able to prep for that. Um and then Friday, October thirty first, was our monthly hall of school meeting, seventh graders hosted, kindergarten through fourth grade shared, um it was a great time. We did it at the end of the day, we did it in afternoon meeting, we often do it in the morning, but because it was Halloween.
Yeah.
We decided to do an afternoon meeting. And this week, we have our scholastic book fair, yesterday was parent teacher conferences. And looking ahead, on Monday, November tenth, will be our annual Veterans Day breakfast at eight thirty and our assembly will be at nine thirty. Sixth graders always um traditionally have done the decorations in the past, our seventh graders will host the breakfast and our eighth graders are running the assembly. So they're all in the process of um getting that done. We are thrilled to have that back in our, and we've had more and more, I think last year we had about sixty something veterans who came. And um we expected to probably be a little bit more this year. Um and our students who have veterans come get to go down, uh last year, we said let them go down there and breakfast, and we kind of ran out of food, so.
Oh boy. Tell them they can't eat.
So this year, we're gonna wait, let the veterans have their breakfast first and then go get their, the students and bring them down to the cafeterias so they can enjoy with um whoever their veteran is that they, who is visiting.
Great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. Okay, um we will do, there is the new monthly expenditure report, um that was in the packets. I don't know if people have questions, concerns about that, I don't know that they're going to be reviewing that at MBC during budget season.
I don't think so at this point, they're kind of right into the whole town stuff, it doesn't make sense to be reviewing that one.
Right.
You're gonna be starting the budget process anyway, real soon.
Yeah.
And we're not meeting, we're not meeting for two weeks.
Oh.
Because it's Veterans Day.
Oh, right, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um so if there's questions about that, um.
Just reach out.
Just reach out, we can, we can.
Yeah, I'll bring it, if they really want it, they can run it off, so.
Yeah. Um and then if if board members here have questions, uh email me your address or bring it to another meeting, we can talk about it. Um policies, we could probably do some real quick, I'm gonna let you talk cause you have those notes.
I wrote down, yeah, um I do have the minutes for our last meeting that we have, there are minutes in here or whatever from our first meeting.
Yeah.
Um my computer went, and so I haven't been able to send them to you, did I just send them to you Jess?
Yeah.
The minutes, okay, yeah, so then you will get them, they're written, Ellen has them here, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, then I'll just throw them into the drive for a moment for that chat, so you can read that.
Yeah. Yeah, great, thank you, even with glasses.
You're welcome.
So um when we looked at um BBA, BBAA, DFA and then the JJJ and JJJR. But there were no, nobody made any additional comments to us for the BBA, BBAA and DFA. So we think the approval of those, they could be approved. With the DFA though, it's contingent on the removal of Cindy Tomlinson's name as the school district treasurer.
Hmm.
And replaced by our new school district.
I don't think we even need to name them.
Mm.
Like I don't know if we should include it.
But just, she was in there, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you could choose to generalize it and say it's how.
I think it's just.
Just maybe generalized, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So otherwise, we say those three could be approved.
I will make a motion to approve BBAA, BBA and DFA.
With the change.
With the change to DFA.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? Alright, all in favor of approving those three policies?
Aye.
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 And then the JJJ, um Kendra had sent us some edits to it, so we felt like we should discuss those edits before.
Yes. Yes.
And we had something in it too, like there was a line, um.
I think we looked up, yeah, we looked it up, we looked it up, um it was you you referenced in RSA, um and we, oh, we were wondering about, you know, you came up with the the number.
Well, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And then we, we looked at the RSA and we found it and realized that's probably why we did it, we just wanted to make sure that that's what.
That you would charge people. Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, yeah.
But it was also something about why, that was what I'm trying to, about to, just talk to.
Yeah, I would just re, I would recommend moving it to a third reading just because um.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, everybody can read the change that.
Well, the state's gonna be putting out a, an advisory regarding this policy.
Oh.
Uh-huh.
Um because there's a, there's a mass wide misunderstanding of the difference between homeschooling and EFA and how different those tracks are.
Yeah.
Because once you accept EFA funds, you get put into a different category of education.
Yeah, that was part of your comments.
You no longer qualify for the same rights that homeschoolers qualify for.
Yes, right. Right.
So I actually put a guidance document in the drive for you guys to review that will supplement that policy. I added it to the policy folder for you guys to look at.
Oh, okay.
Um and the state will be coming out with another um more formal guidance document regarding the different track of EFA. So there's, there's public charter, there's private, there's homeschool and then there's EFA, there's, they are different, there's four different tracks.
And and EFA, private is still different than private. So like if you, private school students also have the right to access things, but not if they're accepting EFA.
Right. Correct, it, anytime you accept EFA funds, it puts you into a totally different category than any of the other groups.
Right. Right. Yes, so, yeah, I would love to see the guidance document.
Yep, it's in the drive.
That is forthcoming, there's one that's forthcoming?
Yeah, there's an advisory document in the drive, but then there's the, the actual um like memo that the state's gonna be putting out. Yeah.
Cause I like, I tried to explain it in the policy, but I'm sure there's better language somewhere.
Yeah, right, and there might, and what we might even end up doing is the, have a policy for homeschooled and just say, people with EFA are exempted. See, and then make a different policy for EFA students that wanting to use, you know, take classes here, we can do that.
So it could maybe be a policy that you end up doing for a reading on, just because of the amounts of edits that they.
Right. I also think, I mean, just as an aside, there's not like a super great way, I don't think, to check to see if someone is receiving EFA.
Yeah.
So I think we would have to, I would like to see us add some sort of attestation if someone is seeking to attend courses here or whatever. Whether or not they have applied for or are currently receiving EFA funds, but I don't know, have to be.
So we should move the, just move this one forward for another reading.
Some, some of it forward.
And, and then we can discuss it.
And there's also, I mean, reasonable minds can differ about um if we wanna charge anything at all. If so, what we wanna charge and if we wanna charge anything for um extracurriculars.
Right, you had ex, you didn't do anything.
I didn't do anything about extracurriculars.
That was, you even had it for younger grades, you only had it for seventh and eighth grade.
That was our question, cause you. Right, you only. Right.
I had it mirroring the homeschool um percentage of ADM that we receive for homeschool students, but it's only for seventh and eighth graders.
Yeah, that's what, that was our question, cause you only had it for seventh and eighth.
Okay.
Correct. But like, we could decide we want to charge K through A students receiving EFA funds, a certain amount of money per course.
Okay, it sounds like, it sounds as, we really need a bigger discussion about this and everybody needs to read the guidance and the policy and then we can have a, a big discussion, okay.
You could decide that. Correct, a hundred percent. Yeah, a hundred percent. Um okay.
Yeah, you may need like an actual like work session.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Yeah. Um do you want to do anything about these first readings?
No.
No, I threw those in there because um one, the JFABD, we actually are required to do an update on that policy because it impacts our grant funding.
So do we, do we agree with that?
And so it had to. No, not tonight, it just had to be on the docket for consideration no later than this meeting.
Okay. Got it.
So um that'll just need to go through the regular process, but there's some, there have been updates to the laws regarding those things, which impact um that policy. So we had to do some updates. And then DN, uh you guys didn't have a policy for, and this is really in regards to anytime we have um equipment, curriculum, books, anything like that. And we no longer need those things, you really should have a policy on how you're gonna dispose of that, whether it's donation, whether it's selling, whether it's just trash.
We've had this question come up before, so we definitely do need a policy about it.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Cool.
So just put that on there, so I didn't forget about it.
Yeah.
Alright.
Okey-dokey, so we got some of them off the list, that's good.
Yeah.
Alright, anyone from here for public comments? No, okay. I will make a motion to go into non-public session pursuant to N H R S A ninety-one dash A colon three, section two, subsection L.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call.
Yes.
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 Alright.
Alright, thank you.
It's out.